Seems like it. I'm about to get on planning board on the meeting, but. So I don't think it'll go too late tonight. Hi Cindy, hi Lisa. Cindy, I love your photo. It's awesome.
Oh, thanks. It's when I took my dad to the Grand Canyon. He lives like two hours from the Grand Canyon he'd never been. I'm like, dude, we're going to the Grand Canyon.
Exactly.
I'm gonna turn off those lights.
Hi Charles.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I feel a little bit like the wizard behind the curtain.
We're getting done by eight o'clock, right?
Woo.
I hope.
Okay, so would you like me to um do some renaming to show planning board members?
I can help you.
Okay, I'm just, I'm trying to monitor the waiting room too.
Yeah, I can do that. I just put COB, I put COB in front of staff and then PB in front of board members.
Board members, okay.
Yeah.
We've got one member of the public, Marie Blaney. I don't know that she wasn't on the list for speakers. I think that's just a.
Probably a member of the public, yeah, I don't know who that is.
The JV D'Souza is here as well and I'll let them in that I think is an applicant.
You have me as a co-host?
I do.
It seemed to rename people. Maybe I need to go on the participants. Oh, you do, yeah. I can't rename people.
Okay, then I'll start working on that if you can manage the waiting room.
I'll be happy to.
Okay.
Hi Kristen. Let's see. Oh, it's light, it's terrible. These folks that are, I think, public members, we need to have them give us a real name.
Yeah, it looks like Ian is, that's probably Ian Swallow from Boulder Housing Partners.
Oh, he just disappeared. Are you recording already?
I am. Is that okay?
Yeah, I probably wouldn't have done it until we start.
I could pause. Recording has started. Good evening, everybody. I'm Jean Gatto with the Conference of Planning Division and I'm going to serve as the technical host for tonight's meeting and this is my first go at this, so I appreciate everyone's patience with me as I adjust to this. I'm learning and Cindy's an old hat at this, so we're going to be sharing some of these responsibilities and I'm hoping that it all goes smoothly. Cindy, you've got the rules. Why don't we, I'm going to look to you to go over those first and then we can go through a few of the other instructions.
Do you want me to bring them up?
Yeah, if you want to, that'd be great, if you, if you could.
Half a second, let me grab them.
That sounds good. Okay, while, while you're doing that, I'm just going to say, in accordance with our meeting, meeting rules, we do need folks to have a full name associated with each person participating in the meeting, and if you plan to participate in the open or public comment, we can't unmute you without your full name. So if your full name is not currently displayed, displayed, please change it, or you can send it to me in the chat box and I'm happy to change it for you. If you, I don't think we have anybody joining by phone just now, but I can. Let's see, let's make sure on that. Nope, I don't think we have anybody just by phone. So that's good. Okay, Cindy, take it away with the rules.
Okay, these are the rules that have been adopted by city council, and so we're pleased to have you join us, and these rules have been adopted to be as transparent as possible and to have some online security. This meeting has been called to conduct the business of the city of Boulder and the activities that disrupt, delay, or otherwise interfere with the meeting are of course prohibited. Time for speaking or asking questions, questions might be limited. At this point in time for public hearing, we are, for the members of the public, we are saying three minutes. No persons shall speak except when recognized by the person presiding, which would be the chair or Jean in this case, and no person shall speak for longer than the time allotted. Each person shall register to speak at the meeting using that person's real name, which is why Jean is asking that people say their, or type out their name. We will ask when you, before you speak to say, to say your name and to possibly spell it in case we don't have your name listed. Any person believed to be using a pseudonym will not be permitted to speak at the meeting. For example, if someone comes onto the meeting with a telephone number or a name associated with a device like your iPad name, the host may be, may ask you to put your full, to use your full name. No video will be permitted except for city officials, employees, and invited speakers or presenters, which in this case would be applicants. Other, or all others will participate by voice only. The person presiding at the meeting shall enforce these rules by muting anyone who violates this rule. This, if the chat function is enabled, it will be used for individuals to communicate with the host, which would be Jean in this case. It should be used for technical, online platform related questions only, which means if you have anything, a question related to the item that we're discussing tonight, it's not going to be recorded, it's not for public forum. If an attendee attempts to use chat for any reason other than seeking assistance from the host, the city reserves the right to disable that individual's access to chat. Only the host and individuals designated by the host will be permitted to share their screen during this meeting. That is that. I'll turn it back over to Jean.
Great. Share. Okay, very good. All right. All right, so with that, so all of our board members have been, I think, I hope so, we've gotten this, to them to be all co-hosts and the staff members so that you can mute and unmute yourself for, for members of the public. I'd just like to make sure that you all remain muted and not have the video enabled until it is time for the public comment, either the open public comment or the public hearing that we'll have associated with the items on the agenda tonight. Okay, so with the board members and Harmon, I know that you have your protocol for this, but it's helpful to consider the muting or the unmuting as the talking stick to unmute yourself to speak and unmute yourself when you want to speak or mute yourself to minimize that background noise. And for members of the public, as you are recognized for open or public comment, I will unmute you so that you may make your comments. And as a reminder, we are not able to permit you to use that video. I don't think we have anyone on the phone at the moment, but should we have those, there are some other instructions for that, so we can let folks know if, if we get some, some folks on the phone. I am seeing someone with C U E D. If I could ask you to please enter, change your name to a, to a full name, as Cindy indicated, we, we have to have full names for people participating. Okay, so when we get to the public hearing, we're going to use the raise hand option. So if you open the participants bar on the side, you'll see. It's not in the participants bar. Okay. There's the option to raise hand. So you can indicate that you would like to participate by using that raise hand function. Then that is in the participants box, which can be found on the menu by hovering over at the bottom of the screen. And so we'll do those in order when we get to that section of the meeting. We'll have a three minute time limit for the public hearing and for the open comment. And I think, Cindy, what else am I missing? I think that that's all of our instructions right off the bat.
You got it.
Okay, very good. Harmon, take it away.
Hey, my name is Harmon Zuckerman. This is the June 18th planning board meeting. I'm going to gavel the meeting to order at 6:09 PM. I'll let the record show that the city of Boulder Planning Board meeting was called to order at 6:09 with six planning board members present, Peter Vitale absent. We have David Ensign, Vice Chair, John Gerstle, Sarah Silver, Lupita Montoya, and Lisa Smith in attendance. The first order of business is approval of minutes. We'll do them one at a time. We have three sets of minutes tonight, so I'll take a motion for approval or modification of the May 7th 2020 minutes.
I'll move to approve them.
Second?
I'll second.
Lisa's second, so we have a motion to approve the May 7th 2020 minutes by Gerstle, seconded by Lisa Smith. Any discussion to the motion? All right, let's take a vote. I'm going to call a roll call vote. John Gerstle?
Aye.
David Ensign?
Aye.
Sarah Silver?
Aye.
Lupita Montoya?
Aye.
Lisa Smith?
Aye.
I'm aye, so that's six to nothing. We've approved the May 7th 2020 minutes. I'll accept a motion to approve or modify the May 21st 2020 minutes.
Can I, can I just ask a question? And this is actually a question to Cindy. Are we approving the minutes that include the, the corrections that we've already sent to you? Or are they, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Well.
Okay, so John, you're making the motion approve.
Uh, no, I just have another question for Cindy about what we're seeing. What we're looking at now, are they, do they incorporate people's changes?
The ones that are on the website have all the updated changes.
Okay.
Except for Lisa just submitted one right before five o'clock and it doesn't have her final change. So, but it has all the changes in there on the website.
So except for what Lisa?
Except for what Lisa submitted at five o'clock, right?
Yes, and that was, David Ensign pointed out that I had made a comment on the May 7th meeting regarding emergency alert systems for CU South that ended up in a note to council, so just a single line, making sure that made it into the minutes, nothing hugely subtle.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Question, David?
Um, yeah, I did look at the, I should have said this before we voted, but I looked at the May 7th, they, the, one of the things I had recommended isn't in there, Cindy, so I don't know.
Oh, okay.
There was a place where it said that in 2018, the planning board did not feel they had the guiding principles in place to decide, but actually we were using the planning, the guiding principles then, so I sent you some wording to change that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I missed that. I'm going to make a note here to go back and, and check that.
Okay.
I'll make sure that gets in there. And you sent that to me already, that edit?
Yeah, I sent you edits for the 7th and the 21st minutes.
Okay, I will, I will make sure that gets in there. I promise you that it'll get in there.
Right. Okay, so, so I'm going to suggest that we, we take another crack at the May 7th minutes and that planning board moves to approve the minutes as described and amended by Lisa Smith and David Ensign. Okay, I'll take, I'll make that motion. I move that planning board accept the May 7th minutes as described to be amended on the record by Lisa Smith and David Ensign.
Seconded.
Okay, any discussion to that? All right, then I'll take a vote. David Ensign?
Yes, aye.
John Gerstle?
Aye.
Sarah Silver?
Aye.
Lupita Montoya?
Aye.
Lisa Smith?
Aye.
Okay, I'm an aye, so it's six to nothing to approve. The minutes is amended. May 21st minutes. Any motion to approve that? John?
I move to approve.
Second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the May 21st minutes by John Gerstle, seconded by Lupita Montoya. And any discussion to that? And I'll take a vote. David Ensign?
Aye.
John Gerstle?
Aye.
Sarah Silver?
Aye.
Lupita Montoya?
Aye.
Lisa Smith?
Aye.
Aye, six to nothing. Those minutes are approved as presented. The May 28th 2020 minutes have been provided to us and reviewed, I would assume, by all the board members. Let's see if anybody would make a motion for approval or further modification of those minutes.
I would move to approve.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I saw Sarah's hand. So a motion is to approve the May 28th minutes. It's by David Ensign and seconded by Sarah Silver. Any discussion? Okay, I'll take a roll call vote. David Ensign? John Gerstle?
Yes.
David waved and held his hand up. Aye. John Gerstle, aye. Sarah Silver?
Aye.
Lupita?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Harmon says aye, so six to nothing. The May 28th minutes have been approved. Next order on the agenda is the public participation. Here's where we give an opportunity for any member of the public to address the planning board on any issue that is not on our public agenda tonight. We only have one item on the public agenda tonight and it's a concept plan for 3485 Stanford Court. If you have comments on Stanford Court, you need to hold them until after the presentation on the public hearing item for 3485 Stanford Court. If you have anything that you want to address the planning board about beyond that, or besides that, then now's your time. Be three minutes per person. Jean, do we have any people signed up?
We have one.
Okay, and I think I see it's Lynn Segal, so.
And if anybody else would like to, please raise your hand at this point. Cindy, do you want to go ahead and put the timer up? And I will go ahead and unmute Lynn and she can go ahead. Or Lynn, you can go ahead and, there we go.
I don't know why you have so many onerous rules. I don't like them. I don't like not having my video up. How would you like it if you didn't have your video up between you all meeting together? This is a virtual world we live in and you're separating the public from themselves and it's not okay. Not only that, as far as the participants list and QA, that should be on there, chat should be on there. You should have breakouts for the public to collaborate between themselves. We live in a virtual world now. Wake up! This should have been done two months ago. Just saying. Okay, now, pre-existing housing on that subject. Gun barrel, you're building as fast as you can down on Bluff Street, building up and up, brand new. You know what? The cheapest housing, the cheapest anything is what you already got. And I encounter so many instructions just trying to get a freaking roof on my house. And with permitting and now with the COVID and people, contractors not being able to come in, permit inspectors not being able to come in, this is utterly ridiculous that you are putting your time, my, my tax dollars, my, my money, you are putting towards this new build stuff. Sorry, we have a different world now. Those need to go on hold. Odell on hold. You know what? My house in my neighborhood, I already have library, I already have a rec center, I already have grocery stores, I have all those things. Odell has not. I already have open space, two blocks from my house. Odell does not. Stop already, stop. Okay, CU South, CU is not even going to be opening to the extent that, you know, we're spending all of our money, all of the staff money on CU South. CU is in big trouble now. The way that, and not only that, the virus has actually opened up a lot of opportunity because we can have great professors, we can have great departments, people from all over the world can pay tuition online. They don't need to live here. We've got skyscrapers all over CU of housing. That's the housing we need to use. Why should you even be spending five minutes on CU South? We don't need another campus in this town. We've got enough pressures for housing. What are you people thinking? Think again. Seriously, this is not funny anymore. This is something we should have learned many years ago and the virus had to teach us. That's not okay. Let's see what else is on here for my list. Rocky Flats. They're saying now Rocky Flats should be open for open space there because of the mental problems of all the people self-isolating? Well, they've got the same problems, except it's comorbidity. Now you die from not only the virus, but from plutonium on Rocky Flats.
Lynn, thank you.
Hold up, say something about that. And the planning department needs to.
Hey Lynn, we're gonna have to mute you.
Because it affects the health of our people.
Go ahead.
Lynn, I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to mute you.
Okay. Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to make a comment? I see Chris Goodman, your hands up.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm reaching out to you today because I've been pretty stressed and I've lost a lot of sleep over the proposed building that you guys are all considering at the Celestial Seasonings Tea Factory area. I really, really implore you, just to reconsider all of that. I'm a Realtor in the area and I've done searches on what's available as far as rental properties. We have 70 or so apartments that are available for rent right now and have been for quite a while in Gun Barrel. That's considering the Apex area, Powderhorn in our area. We have no city services out here. We have very limited bus service out here. My kids, my kids go to high school or went to high school and they couldn't even take the bus to and from school because of such limited services that we have. We have no library, we have no rec center, we have no bike paths to even get into town. Our walkability on this property, contrary to what the builder and the other supporting board members thought, is a 12. It's a 12 for walkability out here in Gun Barrel and specifically on this location. I know because I backed to this property, we bought our home in 2003 and I was here in Boulder whenever Celestial Seasonings poisoned all of those prairie dogs and then promised to the city, and I've pulled the documents, you know, from Carnegie Library, they made a promise to the community that they would keep that a prairie dog safe area and, and a preservation. And that's what we expected when we moved in here and when we bought our home back in 2003. We relied on that. Building these units will literally take away our ability. Building these units will literally take away our ability to enjoy our home and our backyard and putting in, rather than prairie dog, you know, allowing the prairie dogs to live there, putting in these, this high-rise building, three stories tall is obscene. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring to your attention is that we have enough rental properties in this community. We need to start utilizing the buildings that are open and vacant for the potential for people to buy homes. Affordable housing does not begin with apartment renting. Affordable housing begins with homeownership and getting families and individuals who would like to be able to own their own home into the, you know, into a property. This is just not the space to do it in. This area, um, we don't even have a park nearby. That's a, that's a public park. You know, we walk along the street and the sidewalk, and we do loops around the tea factory, and that is really what has kept us sane through this whole pandemic. People walk from all over this area. We just really need for you to consider that, please. Rather than, um, you know, approving some high-density apartment rental housing, I called today, actually, and spoke to the people running the diagonal crossing, which I believe, Mr. Zuckerman, you probably know about. Somehow, you're related to all of this, and I don't want to offend you personally, but I really do think you should recuse yourself from this, because you're too related. Um, but anyway, I called the diagonal crossing today. They have about 50% of it, um, move-in ready, she told me. And they have, um, 82% or 85% vacancy. These things are not renting. For a studio apartment, it's $1,700 a month. I'm sorry, I see my time just ran out, but just please hear our calls and please listen to the community. We do feel like the redheaded stepchild, I believe, someone at that meeting a few months ago.
Chris, thanks.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, and I, I don't usually respond to, to general public comment or members of the public in general. They're entitled to their three minutes. But to the extent that, that untruths are being made public, that impugn the validity of the process of this planning board, I've got to respond. Um, we went through this last time. I disclosed in an abundance of caution that I'm working on the same project that Coburn is working on. I am the attorney representing the applicant for a project that's taking place in a different county. Coburn is the architect for that same applicant. We both serve the same applicant. I do not have any contractual relationship with Coburn. I do not profit from Coburn. I do not share confidential information with Coburn. And if you look at the requirements in our code for recusal, those are the three requirements that have to be met in order for one not to recuse oneself. I chose not to accuse myself because I meet all of the requirements. And what this planning board does is above board. Even more above board, because I don't really have to, I didn't really have to disclose that information at all, since there was no relationship that required recusal. I chose to do it in an abundance of caution, and I want to nip this in the bud, because there is no improper relationship. There's just misinformation if it's being put out like that. So, I thank you very much for your concern, but this is a very ethical body, and I want to make the public understand that. Okay, so do we have any other members of the public who would like to speak a general public comment? Okay, alright, then we're gonna move on to the next item, which is the fourth item on the agenda, Discussion of Dispositions, Planning Board Call-Ups and Continuations. And the first call-up item is for Boulder Escape Room Use Review, LUR 2020-00013. It's a use review for 1,740 square foot indoor amusement use escape room located at 1966 13th Street in the downtown Ford DT4 zoning district. Indoor amusement establishment uses require a use review in this zoning district. The call-up period expires today. Is there anyone who needs to ask any questions about this, who would like to call up the matter? Okay, seeing none, we're not gonna call that up. The second call-up item, therefore and all, is a floodplain development permit, FLD 2019-00140. It's a standard wetland permit, WET 2019-00014, Broadway Reconstruction Concrete Box Culvert at Four Mile Canyon Creek. The call-up period expires tomorrow, on June 19th, 2020. Does anybody have any questions for staff? Would anybody like to call this matter up? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna move on to the third call-up item, which is a standard wetland permit, WET 2018-0004, Replace Existing Potable Water Pipeline Southwest of US Highway 36. The call-up period expires on June 19th, 2020. Any questions from the board for staff? Would anybody like to call this matter up? Okay, then we'll move on. We will, will not call that item up. And the fourth and final call-up item is a standard wetland permit matter, WET 2020-0008, Goose Creek Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Replacement Project. The call-up period expires on June 19th, 2020. Anyone have any questions for staff on that? Okay, um, well, that's great. Kristen Shepherd, it looks like you probably can take off. We will not be calling that matter up. Okay, let's move on to the public hearing item. Tonight's public hearing item is a concept plan review. It's a request for sit-in and staff and planning board input on a proposal to redevelop the property at 3485 Stanford Court to include 60 permanently affordable apartments for seniors age 55 plus and maintain the existing childcare facility on site. This is case number LUR 2020-0019. And I'm gonna turn it over to Charles Farrow. And Charles, you can take it away.
Great, thanks very much. Good evening, members of the board. I'm gonna turn it over to Shannon Moller. She's served as the case manager on this particular concept plan, and she'll be taking you through the staff analysis.
Okay, good evening, board. I should be sharing my screen. Um, let me know if you can't see that PowerPoint. Alright. Um, so, as described by the chair, um, this concept plan review is a proposal for 60 permanently affordable senior housing units at 3485 Stanford Court in the residential medium two zoning district. And, um, the concept plan review is, um, a step in the process meant to be a dialogue between the applicant, staff, the community, and planning board. So no formal action is being taken tonight. Um, it's meant to examine the general characteristics of the project and to provide comments and guidance early in the process. As part of the public process, notification was sent to property owners within 600 feet. We did receive several public comments on the proposal, and I'll provide a summary of those. And the applicant also conducted community outreach, um, prior to the application, and they will be able to describe that during their presentation. Here you can see the property is 4.9 acres. It's located in South Boulder at the end of Stanford Court. It's generally located west of Broadway and north of Table Mesa Drive. This proposal is required to go through a concept plan review, because it exceeds two acres or 20 dwelling units in the RM2 zoning district. The existing site contains two church structures, two parking areas, and community gardens. The northern portion of the site is heavily sloped and contains natural open space with social trails. And here you can see the original church sanctuary building that was built in the 1950s. Um, it is proposed to remain, and the church addition built in 2001 is proposed to be removed. And a new residential structure built in the southwest area of the site. Um, the church congregation has relocated in 2019. There is a childcare facility, um, on the site right now, the Rainbow Center Childcare, and it is proposed to remain. Here you can see, um, some context photos of the surrounding area. Surrounding the site are primarily single-family duplex homes to the northwest and southwest, and to the southeast are the Boulder Creek Apartments and the Harvard Park Apartments. And Martin Park is located to the northeast via the pedestrian underprides under Broadway. And the Table Mesa Shopping Center is located just to the south. Here you can see multimodal, uh, transport, transportation connections are available near the property, including multi-use paths in green and bike lanes and bike routes in blue and red, and their transit stops along Table Mesa and Broadley with local and regional service. And here is just a zoomed-in look at the topography on the site, which as you can see, um, does heavily slope down to the north and east. The Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan Designation was recently updated as part of the 2015 BBCP update. The designation is medium-density residential, which is intended to provide 16 to 14 units per acre. And the site is within the residential medium two zoning district, which permits attached dwelling units at a density of up to 12.4 units per acre. This proposal includes construction of a new three-story residential building in the southwest area of the site to include 60 permanently affordable housing senior units. Um, addition, in addition to the church, um, circa 2001 would be demolished for this building and the existing sanctuary building dating from the 1950s would remain. The eastern parking area would remain with some improvements, um, and a drive access is proposed along the south property line to allow access to a small western parking area. And the applicant has received input from the community on this proposal and received input that maintaining the sweep of the existing ridge and the character of the hillside is important. So this proposal seeks to maintain that hillside intact. This slide shows the north and south proposed building elevations, and the existing church building that would remain is rendered in white. The proposal's a contemporary building with stacked flats and a double-loaded corridor. It's cut into the grade, appearing primarily as a three-story building on the east end and a two-story building towards the west. It's oriented parallel to the south property line and has two short wings extending from either end. Several outdoor spaces are provided, including a large patio north of the building and outdoor terraces on upper floors, as well as ground-level, um, spaces for ground-level dwelling units. And a covered vehicle drop-off is provided at the south building entrance. The overall city processes required for this proposal are listed here. The main process after this process would be a site review amendment to amend the existing proposal on the site. A use review might be required for the daycare, specifically if the daycare were to change its operating characteristics. Um, if either the city or the applicant desires to landmark the 1950s-era church building, that would be a process to go through. And after those processes, there would be vacation of right-of-way technical documents, preliminary and final plots, and building permits. Um, staff did receive feedback from several individuals. Generally, most of the comments were opposed to the proposal and included concerns regarding traffic in the area, disturbance to the environment, and compatibility with the surrounding area. Staff also received a comment in support of the proposed senior housing and childcare uses and, um, suggestions to include a neighborhood serving spaces or use such as a restaurant or coffee shop or a rentable community room. Moving on to key issues, staff identified the items on this slide for feedback from the board, um, including the proposal's consistency with BBCP policies and compatibility with the character of the surrounding area. For consistency with BBCP policies, staff found the proposal supported many policies related to providing affordable housing, supporting a range of households and housing types and diversity, as well as design and land use-related policies such as compact development and compatibility of land uses. At the time of site review, staff would be looking for additional attention on the transportation connections within the property and to ensure the site is well-connected to surrounding pedestrian bike and transit linkages. For compatibility with the surrounding character, staff compared the proposal with surrounding areas in terms of character, density, mass and scale, and site layout. As described in the memo, the surrounding area was generally developed in the 1950s through the 1970s, includes a mix of single-family duplex and attached dwelling units with various architectural styles and roof forms. The surrounding densities, massing, and scale of surrounding properties also vary with lower densities in single-family areas and densities as high as 18 units per acre in the apartments to the southeast. Generally, staff was supportive of the proposed site layout and massing and scale, which are intended to minimize the visibility of the proposal and provide variation in the building and roof form to reduce the apparent mass and bulk of the building at key points. At the time of site review, staff would be looking for additional information to show how the design of the architecture relates to the design of the church and to provide information on building materials and construction and to provide details on buffering and screening parking and drive aisles from surrounding properties. So that concludes staff's presentation. I've tried to keep it short, as the applicant does have a very detailed presentation with a lot more history, information about community outreach and design information, so I'm happy to take any questions, or I can turn it over to the applicant.
Shannon, can you click down your screen so we can see all the planning board members?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, does anybody have, any planning board member have any questions for staff before we go on to the applicant presentation? Okay, I see Sarah's hands up.
Uh, so, I had a question that has to do with the RM2 zoning. Um, the definition for RM2 is medium-density areas primarily used for small lot residential development, including without limitation duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes, where each unit generally has direct access to ground level. So some of the dwelling units in this proposal do have access, the ground level access, and many do not. And I'm just sort of curious, um, are there other examples of RM2 areas that also do not, um, uh, focus on ground level access type of dwelling units?
Yeah, when I read that definition, it talks about dwelling units without limitation, and then it lists a few types of dwelling units. So, when I'm reading that, I don't get the impression that the only types of units would be units that would have access to ground level. Um, I think just looking at the ones right adjacent to it with those apartments, I don't know that all of those would have access to the ground level, but I haven't analyzed that in depth, or looked at dwelling units throughout the city in the RM2 zones specifically.
Okay, thank you. I did, I did sort of drive around that area, and it does look like many of those buildings that are similar in that they're sort of big, long, um, apartment-style buildings do seem to have, um, access. Every, each town, townhome style seems, seems to have access, so I'm just trying to understand the compatibility there. So, thank you.
Okay, I saw David Ensign's hand next.
Hi, um, yes, uh, thank you for that presentation. I, uh, just wanted to, um, bring up the, uh, connector on the east part of the property that heads down to Harvard. Um, I, I don't ever see that mentioned very much, and it does seem like kind of an interesting and convenient connector. However, there might be some ADA issues with it, because it is a little steep without a handrail. So I just wondered if, if there's anything to know about with that.
Yeah, I think that was something that we'd like to look at more at the time of site review, is how all of those transportation are gonna link up. Um, with the information provided at this level, there's not a ton of detail about those slopes and those grades and the sidewalks that could be provided. And that's something we really want to dig into more to make sure that, since it is located near all of these great transportation connections, how can we really make sure that that access is taken advantage of?
Thank you.
John Gerstle?
Yeah, thank you. So I have, uh, two questions. One is with respect to the, uh, landmark value of, of the church that's proposed to be retained. Has staff made any, uh, does staff have any thoughts on whether landmarking is appropriate there?
Yeah, this, um, this application was referred to our historic preservation staff, and they indicated that they would take a look at that at the time of site review to determine whether or not we would recommend that it is landmarked. And if we were to, that could be a condition of approval that we could place on the site review to have the applicant to have the applicant make that application. If, if staff recommends that, so I don't have a read on whether or not we'd recommend it at this point, but we would definitely be looking at that.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the second question is with respect to the path that goes to the neighborhoods below to the north in, across the steep area. Is it clear whether that would continue to be open to the public for, for use?
I think the applicant could speak to their exact plans on that. I know that the intent, based on what they've submitted at this point, is to make this a place that is still going to be accessible to the public because I know that that's been a really great feature of this project or this site at this point. So I think they could speak more to their plans with that when they do their presentation.
Okay, and, and just a quick question also directly to the west of this area and the, in the steep area that we just talked about. What is the nature of any easements or open space classification of that area that is directly to the west of this? That it looks like a path could go through there to the property owners agree.
I don't know if I know the exact specific spot you're talking about. I know that this was sent to our open space staff and they didn't have an interest in designating or taking an easement on any portion of this property to specifically designate it as open space. So I think that in terms of paths and linkages, we would definitely be looking at those and making sure that there was agreement about what types of paths and linkages and areas that can be, you know, kept in a natural state at the time of site review. But I don't, I don't know if I know the exact one you're looking at, but we could definitely look into that.
Well, it's just a continuation of the steep area to the north of the site. It goes, continues to the west, so it's not part of this property, but I just wondered if any attention had been paid to that area.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Sarah, again, if no other, no other planning board members have a question?
Anyone else have a question before I ask? Okay, um, so one of the things, one of the things I was struck by this area is the multitudinous roads. It's kind of a mess back there. And I'm curious if staff has given any thought to whether this project could lev, could be a lever to kind of make more sense out of all of, all of those roads. And it may not be possible, but it just struck me that there's an awful lot of roads over there.
In terms of like removing extra?
I don't really know. I'm just was curious if you all have thought about this at all.
I think what we looked at at this point was the access to the property. There is some extra right of way that's actually shown as part of this property that would be vacated most likely after the, this approval went through as it's right of way that is owned by the city, but it's not being used. So in, in terms of that, that would clean up that extra right of way. In terms of other roads that aren't part of this property, that, that wasn't something we analyzed as part of this concept.
Thank you.
Is that it for questions? Lisa?
Yeah, I was just looking at the parking. It looks like, I think there's sixty units proposed in fifty-five parking spaces. And I was curious if staff had any thoughts on the appropriateness of that, if it could be fewer, if you think that's sufficient for that number of units.
I think there's fifty-five in the east parking lot and then enough in the west parking lot that it adds up to seventy-three. So that would, there would be sixty-two required for the dwelling units themselves. And then we would need to evaluate the amount of parking that the daycare would need and that's due to review. So we felt like, just at first glance, that the amount of parking seemed to be generally appropriate and we would be looking to make sure there was a good balance there. If the daycare does remain, that there would be adequate parking for both uses.
So that's, I guess that's just one thing I'd be interested in moving forward and Harmon cut me off of from doing this wrong. But just, yeah, whether there could maybe be slightly reduced or, you know, there's such good transit right there. It seems like a lot of surface parking.
No, I wouldn't cut you off Lisa, but I would just suggest that that's something that we have. Yeah, it's not really a question for staff as much as it's an opinion of planning board that you can, you can sell to us and, and we can talk about it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Lupita?
I am unmuted, right?
You are, you sound good.
Okay, so, um, I live in this area, so I'm familiar with that particular section. And there's a couple of things that come to my mind. One is we do have a number of retirement communities in this area, which I think may be a good model to get a sense of really how much parking is really needed for this type of population in this section. And I don't know if the city had looked into that, but that would be one thing. There is, and another question is has to do with the specific intersection of rack coming out of the King Supers. That intersection to, to make left turns is, is, it is a nightmare when we have people visiting and coming out. So I'm thinking probably the traffic may not be increased so much because of the type of population it is. But if, if there is anything that could be done to improve that intersection, potentially considering maybe installing a light.
Hey Lupita, can, can I just ask you, is there a question for staff?
Yes, because I'm wondering if they have had that opportunity to look at other sites.
So what that means is we wouldn't require this project generally to fund or construct improvements to intersections nearby. I can say that just in talking with our transportation folks, they are aware of those issues down at that kind of intersection down there. And I think they're looking at improvements potentially, but it wouldn't be this project funding those improvements. That would be more of a city project.
Okay, thank you.
Great, good questions. Any other planning board members have a question for staff? Okay, then I think Shannon, you can take it from here and turn it over to the applicant or what do you have to do?
Okay, I'm going to share my screen again and let's see. I think we just need to make sure our applicant is a
co-host.
So I think we'll need Ian and JV permitted to co-host.
Okay, almost got that, Shannon, just a second.
Okay.
There we go. Okay. JV and Ian, you can turn your videos on and you should be able to unmute yourselves.
Great, thank you. All right, well, thanks Shannon, members of planning board. My name is Ian Swallow with Boulder Housing Partners. I am the project manager for the Mount Cavalry project. Also joined tonight by JV D'Souza, who is the architect for the project. And you will hear from him in a bit. So next slide, Shannon. Just to set a little bit of the context of why we think this is such an important project, wanted to share just some of the data of the seniors that are currently living in BHP housing. So you'll see there the median income for a, our senior households is just over a thousand dollars a month. And we really are serving some of Boulder's most vulnerable seniors in our housing. Next slide, Shannon. This came through a little funky, but that's okay. The second point I wanted to really talk about is just, you know, what an exceptional location we think this site is for affordable senior housing. So you can see there the times for walking from the site to some of the adjacent amenities. So three and four minutes to the library. It's about a six-minute walk down to the skip stop that'll take you to downtown. And then of course, in this neighborhood would be remiss not include, it's only about a seven-minute walk to get to Southern Sun. So we're excited about what a great location this provides. Next slide. Just to touch a little bit on some of the background and history of this site. So as Shannon mentioned, the land use designation was changed in the twenty fifteen BBCP update and really acknowledged the, you know, appropriateness of this site for multifamily housing. At that same time, BHP actually went through an initial site planning process. That included housing. The Mount Cavalry Lutheran Church was proposed to remain at that point as well as the childcare. We went through that process and ultimately determined that it was best for, for this site, for the neighborhood, for us to pause it at that point. The dual uses or really triple uses in terms of impact felt like too much. So at that point, we paused the project and really waited for something to change to restart. Next slide. Fast forward to late last year, the church left the site, so they relocated to a new facility out on East Arapahoe. And that really felt to BHP like the right time to reengage with the community on this and really start the site planning process again. And that is kind of all culminating towards a CHAFA application for low-income housing tax credits in August of this year. Next slide, please. Did want to touch on some of the community engagement we've done in this iteration, in the twenty twenty iteration. So we hosted an open house in January as well as a design workshop in February that we thought both went really well. We got a lot of great feedback and got a lot of great input from a variety of stakeholders. We also did an online design preferences survey in April when we were no longer doing in-person engagement that went really well. Next slide, please. Just quickly touch on that online survey. We had over ninety responses. It was open for about ten days. We had a couple interactive videos, some images and asked some questions just about general design preferences. Some of the things we were really excited to get out of that, you'll see there, we had over a quarter of the respondents were actually interested in living in affordable senior housing, which frankly is much higher than we typically get at an in-person community meeting, especially when you're having to tell someone that, you know, units wouldn't be available for, you know, two, three, four years sometimes. So we were very excited about that as well as the fact that only about a third of participants had attended the in-person design workshop. So we feel like we really reached a broader segment of folks with that online tool. Next slide. We certainly heard some concerns through that process. JV will touch on that in some of the design, but wanted to briefly touch on density. I think as Shannon outlined, there's a variety of densities around this site. So you'll see the apartments kind of to the south and southeast are quite high density. There's some duplexes immediately to the south, some multifamily to the northeast there. And then primarily single-family homes to the west and north. So we really wanted to keep the building closer and relate more to the multifamily housing. You'll hear a bit about how we've tried to keep the structure two stories to the west near the single-family homes and then staying away from the crest of the hill and providing some buffering. Next slide. As far as transportation, and this may answer some of the questions we had about parking. I think one of the things we heard is that parking is an issue in the area. So we're providing more parking frankly than I think we probably need for this site. So as a means of comparison, Highmar, which is a senior property, is about a mile from here, also in South Boulder, has fifty-nine units, a very similar. Only thirty-six households living at Highmar actually have cars. That combined with the fact that the childcare use is primarily a drop-off use. We think that we have more than enough parking on this site, but think that, that may be a way to help alleviate issues that we've heard with some street parking and things like that. Additionally, we're providing a pretty significant amount of one-bedroom units with this proposal, which should, you know, limit kind of vehicles on the site further. And then finally, I think especially compared to Highmar, this site is just, has many more amenities within a walking distance that we really think there's going to be not many kind of vehicle trips from this site. And with that, I think I'm going to turn it over to JV to talk about the design with the next slide.
Okay, can, can everybody hear me? Okay, we did want to talk just briefly back in two thousand and seventeen, we did. We were designing the site and we were going to, at that point, keep both the Northex Building, which is the structure that was built in two thousand and one, and the Sanctuary Building that was built in nineteen fifty-eight, fifty-nine. But that had some challenges. It pushed the building further to the west, closer to the single-family development that's there. And it also pushed it, made the building push out a little bit and come closer to the hillside to the north. We did some studies of both of the existing structures to see what their value might be going forward in terms of providing usable space for Boulder Housing Partners for either community space or for future residential space. And the Sanctuary Building actually has a lot of value in terms of potential use. The Northex Building, because of its planned configuration inside and some of its accessibility issues, was determined to be of significantly less value and a bit of an impedance in terms of developing the site in a way that the neighborhood was asking. So the Northex Building will be constructed, sorry demolished and the Sanctuary, the historic structure is to be preserved and renovated. Next slide. Okay, so as Ian said, we had a design workshop in February. We presented a number of different alternatives. And in the other alternatives we presented, taking the apartment building and splitting it into two smaller structures, a little more in keeping with the scale of the existing Sanctuary Building. And we really thought that the community would prefer those smaller buildings and the parking kind of scattered across the site. And much for surprise, this was the overwhelming favorite instead was to put one single large structure on the site in order to, if you go to the next slide, Shannon. These were the things, oh, so the transparency on the site or on some of the graphics has disappeared. But what was really important to the neighborhood was maintaining the natural character of the hillside to the north, retaining that path that comes up from Dover Drive below up the hill and through to Stanford Court and across to Table Mesa Shopping Center. Keeping parking on the east and west margins of the site to keep the building as far as possible from the single-family development on the bottom of the hill along Dover and along Harvard and from the single-family development along the west, along Stanford Drive. Next slide, please. As Ian said, then we followed that up with some additional community engagement work where we talked to the community via an online presentation. And we were really asking them about the form and massing of the building. Critical issues were proximity to the hillside and can we go back a slide or two there, Shannon, please? So we presented three different alternatives and they were, they're fairly subtle, but they were about how far west the building extended, how far north and how far close to, how close to the edge of the hill it became. It came, sorry, and how we might be able to remove portions of the building to modulate the form a bit and break down some of the scale of the structure. And of the three that were presented, A, B, and C, B and C were preferred equally. And so if you go to the next slide, Shannon, it, this is kind of a hybrid of B and C. It makes the building a little bit longer east-west. It pulls the building back from the edge of the hillside, which was really one of the most overwhelming concerns of all of the neighborhood. And it puts some additional mass right at the entry off of Stanford Court so that we could remove some of the top floor buildings in different areas to create some outdoor living spaces. And again, to step down the form of the building at the, at the ends. Next slide. So this is a site plan that shows the overall footprint of the building and does show the parking. Fifty-five spaces on the lower lot to the east, eighteen on the lot up to the west. There is a covered drop off right where the Stanford Court comes into the site. The new building and the existing church create an entry court. There's a large terrace on the north side of the building that looks out across the town to the Flatirons and towards Flagstaff. And let's see, the daycare does stay, it's in the lower floor of the existing church structure. And the path down to the neighborhood below is to be reoriented. It's brought up specifically in between the new building and the church so that residents of the neighborhood below can come up and through the site and over to Table Mesa. Next. So this is actually the first floor site plan. The first floor of the building of the new The first floor of the building of the new proposed apartment building aligns with the church structure. The west end of the first floor is actually below grade. And so the south access drive is ascending and there's a stair and ramp that ascends to an upper terrace as well. Next slide. So that at the second floor, the west parking is actually at the second floor level. So residents that live on the second floor can park on the west side of the building and enter the building at grade there. There's also space on the west side for community garden and for additional garden space to buffer the project from single family homes to the west. Next. So this is the ground floor plan, 17 units. Again, most of this I've already described. The Sanctuary Building, the historic church structure is to be renovated as common area for the residents of the site. It makes an entry court between that existing structure and the new apartment building. These apartments on this floor are a bit of garden level because the site is rising to the west. But those ground floor units all have access either to a private patio and planted outdoor area or to a shared resident courtyard. Next slide. On the second floor, again, there's 18 parking spaces to the west. There's the garden area and buffer, landscape buffer for the single family homes to the west. And there's a small upper terrace as well. And residents of the second floor, as I mentioned earlier, can access their units at grade on the second floor. 24 units on the second floor. Next. The top floor has 19, which brings it to a total of 60. There are locations for roof decks or roof terraces in different locations on the building for sunrises, sunsets, midday, different exposures for different times of year. And there are common area enclosed areas up there as well for the residents to share. Next. Shannon showed these elevations. We really think that the building has two front, two primary elevations, the north and south. South is what you see as you come into the site. North is what you can see from Broadway as you drive south. The existing sanctuary is in the foreground. You can see that they have different architectural characters. The site, the south elevation is more urban as because it comes up against the apartments and duplexes. The north elevation is considered more organic and has a different material palette because of its relationship to the hillside. Next. The east and west elevations are relatively small because the building's primary axis runs east-west. You can see on the upper one, the covered drop-off where the building comes over the drop-off area and creates a protected zone for residents to be dropped off and enter the structure. Next. This is the architectural character for the north elevation, so facing the hillside. Lots of natural looking materials and natural colors, very highly textured, some transparency, a connection to the land and to the sky above. Next. And the form and scale and character of the materials on the south side is more urban and townhouse in nature. Next. And we have a series here of just aerial views that kind of explain the overall concept. This is from the northwest, looking at the structure. The sanctuary is on the left-hand side, the entry court between the sanctuary and the new apartment building, the terrace that looks over the hillside to the Flatirons. The neighborhood path comes up the hill between the two buildings. The hillside stays natural. The building is two stories tall on the west side, three stories tall on the east side. Next. This is from the southwest. And again, you can see the architectural character of the south elevation is much more vertical in character, whereas on the north elevation, it's more horizontal. The access drive descends from the west parking down to Stanford Court. Next. This is looking over the top of the sanctuary towards the building, the entry court in between the two structures and the hillside beyond. The drop-off, covered drop-off area is immediately upon entering the site on Stanford Court. Next. This is a view as you enter on Stanford Court. So the drop-off area is underneath the building immediately to the left there. Beyond the apartment structure, you can see the Sanctuary Building to remain. Next. This is a view looking back at the entry court, the space between the existing sanctuary structure and the new apartment building with potential for a roof terrace up above so that the building mass, as it comes to the existing structure, is two stories tall. Next. And the final image, this is the terrace on the northwest side of the building. And again, the architectural character is different here. There are trellis elements to kind of lightly connect the building to the sky. Much more organic material palette here, different color schemes, a lot of garden space for a lot of wonderful outdoor living opportunities for future residents of the project. And that wraps us up.
Well, thank you for that presentation. Shannon, do you have anything else or should I open it up to planning board questions to the applicant?
I can learn to understand you much better if I can get familiar with the way you talk. I need your permission to help.
Sorry about that.
Siri doesn't understand me? Come on.
Siri's not understanding.
All right. So, all right, then I'll just take hands from planning board members. Anyone have any questions for the applicant? I saw John Gersko's hand up first, then Sarah, then Lupita.
Yeah, thank you. So several questions. I appreciate it that you intend to maintain the public access to that path going down the hillside to the north. Would would there be generally public access to the entire area? Or do you intend to fence or gate it off somewhere?
Yeah, great question, John. We would certainly, the site would be open for the public to walk through and use as a connection. The way that site is currently oriented, it definitely serves that purpose for folks down on Dover to get over to Table Mesa, and we would have no intent to change that. Certainly no fences or gates that would restrict people walking through the site.
Okay. I have several questions, but we can circle around and.
Yeah, that sounds great. That sounds great. So I think Sarah's next.
So I had a question about a statement that was made in the proposal specific to the childcare facility, which was that the childcare facility, and I'm paraphrasing here, would need to pay for their own, the renovation of their portion of the facility. And I'm trying to understand what that means. I'm, I don't know if it's a private childcare facility or a public one. What does it mean that they have to pay for renovations themselves? And what does it mean if they can't, what, like, just help unpack that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. So the, just I guess as a little bit of background, the Rainbow Childcare, who is located in the lower level of that Sanctuary Building, I think they've been there about 40 years. They were initially started kind of as an offshoot of the church. They are now a separate nonprofit entity. And Sarah, that that statement was really meant to just recognize we, we can't use affordable housing funds to renovate the nonprofit childcare space. So we have been working with Rainbow on what it could look like for them to remain. As you can imagine, that sanctuary structure from the 50s, it has had almost no capital improvements done to it, is in need of quite a bit of renovation. And so we are looking at a variety of different sources that could help pay for that renovation. So city CDBG funds, Boulder County Worthy Cause Funds, as well as some other sources that might be able to renovate that space. I don't have a definitive answer on what that looks like exactly, but we think it's a good use. We want it to stay. It's just the nitty-gritty work of figuring out what the, what the funding is for that.
So just as a follow-up, if perchance you're not able to help them identify funds, what is, what, what it means that this facility, the childcare center can't stay? But what is, and what would that mean for you all?
We would still renovate the sanctuary. So the current, as it stands, the upper level would be common space for the residents and the lower level would be the childcare. Should the childcare not be able to remain? I think, you know, we would look at the other potential uses, whether it's, you know, BHP kind of staff space for offices or a maintenance staff, other, you know, nonprofit potential rental space. It's a pretty big floor plate. It's about 5,000 square feet. So I think, you know, there would be some creative thinking about what uses could go there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Lupita.
Yes, my question, and maybe a little silly, but you know, given that this is specific housing for senior citizens, I'm wondering, and I didn't see in the description of the, of the buildings, there are provisions for elevators or some specific assisted, you know, access to the upper levels.
Yeah, so there, there would be two elevators within the building, which is really common for senior housing. That's basically all of the units can then be accessible or at least adaptable to be accessible in the future because they're all served by elevator. So we would certainly have that.
Lisa?
So I'll go back to parking, which seems to be a common theme for me. So I appreciate the comments you already made around kind of parking and the number of spaces and how you worked to think about how you might be able to reduce them. I was curious with the layout of the site plan, the slope of the site, did you look at all that like tuck-under parking or like partially covered parking? And then looking at other existing BHP projects and you're seeing how much people actually use the parking, have you thought about maybe expanding some of the garden area? The, the shared garden plots that were, I think, over to the west?
Yeah, I think when we had looked at the project back in 2017, we had actually looked at providing some underground parking. It is certainly nice. It can also be extremely cost prohibitive. So for instance, you know, we're seeing about $50,000 a space for underground parking. That being said, I think, you know, covered parking is certainly something we would look at, especially at a senior site. I do think there would be potential to reduce the number of spaces. And, you know, if we did that, we would certainly want to provide an additional amenities, whether it's garden or open space or something like that. So I think, you know, if there's direction to look at that, we would, we would certainly do that as well as, you know, exploring what some covered parking might look like as well.
And I may have missed it, were any of the spots like carport, were they like roof covered or?
They are not currently. It is all surface parked currently.
Um, solar funds, you know, you might be able to, if you did car, you know, carport style, you might be able to put solar panels on there and defray some of the costs, just one.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? David?
Yeah, and I just, because of the discussion of the parking lot, I remembered that the, I think the community gardens that currently exist would need to be relocated kind of over to the west side of the property. And I did, I do, I have seen that there are some pretty mature trees over there. So I don't know how much thought has gone into relocating the community gardens over there. But if you, if you have, I'd be interested in hearing that.
Yeah, so that, those existing community gardens on the west side, I think, you know, the intent would be to keep community garden space as a buffer on the far west property boundary. As they're shown currently, they would not be as large as they are existing. But I think, you know, it's a great, it's a great use for senior housing. It's always very high demand, so we're always open to expanding that. And then as far as the trees, we actually had a tree survey done back in 2017 to get a good sense of some of the trees out there. So, you know, our intent is to really preserve the trees on site on that northern slope down towards Dover. That really creates a nice kind of forest area. There are some, some ash trees that I think may need to come down as a result of the Emerald Ash Bore and just some that are, that are unhealthy, but we would certainly want to preserve as many of those as possible.
Okay. I saw John's hand go up again.
Yeah, thank you. I, in looking at the design, I see that none, none of these places seems to have private balconies except for those on the first floor with the, to, to the southern side that you've had some outdoor space for, for each of them. And it occurs to me that in many cases, the value of a balcony or is, you know, private open space for individuals, especially seniors, may be very high. And I'm just wondering if you, what the logic is that you decide not to provide that?
Yeah, absolutely. Balconies are always an interesting design discussion. And, you know, I've actually looked at this on a number of different senior projects, both in the city and county. And you know, what I think we've kind of landed on and looked at is that individual balconies sometimes actually get less use than we think they are and they can become almost storage for the individual unit. And so I think the approach that we've taken here is to not provide individual balconies, which saves some costs and then invest that cost in really, you know, tremendous kind of common spaces on the site, which we actually find can be more successful for senior households, especially. Back on that first or second slide, you would see the average household side for our average household size for our seniors is about 1.1 people per household. So we've actually found, I think, that seniors prefer to be able to have common spaces where they can gather. And so the approach here has been to provide those common spaces, both indoor and outdoor, as well as in the renovation of the sanctuary.
Thank you.
John, is that it?
Yeah, then, never quite it. But almost. So I was also wondering about the decision to make the southern exposure more urban as, as Mr. Sza described it versus the northern, the northern side is somewhat more, has a different character. I have to say that to me, the, the northern character seemed more attractive, both on the north and the southern side. And I wondered if you had thought about that.
We would certainly entertain that. We, we know that the building is very large. And we are always looking for ways to take the scale of the building and, you know, reduce the scale through visual means of different materials in different areas and different systems on the building. So it's really a look at, instead of trying to have one single structure that is uniform throughout, we were exploring the alternative of having some different appearances for the structure as it faced the neighborhood in different ways. But we're certainly able and open to input from the community. And this is a, a level of input we haven't yet been able to ask the neighborhood about. And should the neighborhood say, we much prefer that aesthetic and that character, we would certainly listen and we would certainly do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll go to Sarah then Lupita.
So I appreciate you bringing up the mass of the building because that's what my question is about. And it is maybe too specific, but I, I appreciate that you're trying to lower this, the height of the building as it moves to the west. But it also seems from the proposal like you're likely to come and ask for a height modification, which you are allowed to do as a, because you have more than 40% permanently affordable housing. But I'm struck by the, I'm wondering if you have thought about ways in which you could actually reduce the height in, in some of those three-story areas. And what I was looking at was the share, the public spa, and that's not public, the communal space that you have on the first floor of the very large building is just across the, the patio, will be just across the patio from an entire building that is intended to be community space. And I'm just curious if you all might imagine using that, what is currently imagined as community space in the big building for apartments instead, that would allow you perhaps to lower the building a little bit, at least a little bit more of it down to 35, a little bit lower?
Well, let me, I, I can say that in the ensuing two months since we submitted the proposal, the, the concept plan, work hasn't stopped, but has continued on. And I think were you to see where we're at today, I think you would be very pleased. We have looked at how to be more efficient with the community space and how we might be able to change some units and take some pieces, additional pieces off of the building. But we, after talking to Shannon and other city staff a couple of weeks ago, instead of coming in and presenting something that didn't look like what we presented, what we submitted in the concept review, we just chose to stick with what we. we just chose to stick with what we submitted is what we presented today. But those things are being considered and a number of those types of opportunities have been explored and are being reflected in the current design of the structure.
Okay, thank you.
I think Lupita was next.
Yes, my question has to do with, you know, the last three months that we've been dealing with the coronavirus and how we're aware that our senior citizens have been impacted in disproportionate ways. I'm wondering if any of those news and what we're learning about places similar to the ones that you are building, if if what you're learning from the news and reports have impacted on the way that you look in other spaces that you're proposing. And if it's anything that was useful on what we're learning in terms of how to make it the best possible space for this particular population.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, Lupita. And certainly something I think we've spent a lot of time as an organization looking at over the past several months, because we do have many, many seniors in our properties kind of throughout Boulder. So I think, you know, what we've seen is that we've, you know, restricted visitor access at all those and really been kind of amazed that some of the community that has formed there and how residents have really supported each other through what can be, you know, a difficult situation in having to have more limited access. I think, I think in terms of physical design, especially for this site, you know, the outdoor spaces are so critical for something like this and providing those spaces. So I think, you know, we have spent a lot of time looking at what these various terraces and kind of outdoor spaces could be and how those could really serve as something really valuable to a senior, especially given current circumstances.
And if I could add as well, John asked about, you know, private balconies and when we submitted this in April and when we were preparing the design documents in April, and we had only been locked inside of our houses for two or three weeks at that point. I think we view the ability to step outside very differently now that we've been inside our homes for 10 to 12 weeks. And I do know a number of seniors that have expressed that the ability to just step outside and get some fresh air without having to go through the common areas is important. I don't know that that would mean we would really put private balconies on, but perhaps Juliette balconies that would allow people to open a door and step to a rail at the edge of their bill of the end, edge of their unit and look outside. Those sorts of things I do think we might want to consider. And I, that is Lupita directly in response to kind of what we've learned and what we've experienced over the last couple of months here in terms of, you know, effective supportive of good mental health for seniors, ability to connect with nature and outside when we're not able to get up and move about the way we normally would.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? John?
Yeah, one of your responses from the neighbors was asking about the possibility of making community rooms available to the neighborhood and also the possibility of having a cafe or something like that in 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 connection with this project. Have you given that any thought?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think as far as the cafe front, I think that that type of use would really struggle at this site. You have a significant amount of retail already existing across Table Mesa. So I don't know that in practice that that would actually be a good use for this site. We've certainly looked at, you know, making common space available. I think the sanctuary building could be a good fit for that, the upper level. We are unfortunately bound by the rules of the tax code and the IRS who runs the low income housing tax credit program. So there is some nuance there. I think we would want to look at that more in depth and see what could be possible. But I think we've heard, you know, loud and clear that some community space would really be valued.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I guess I'll just ask one question probably of JV. Following up on Sarah's question on height, do you have any designs that you think, given the way Boulder measures height and the change in topography across the site and the length of the building that would allow you to come forward with a by right height proposal and not need a height modification?
What was presented tonight is a by right height allowance. It's the on one of the elevations, I, because I was trying to make sure we came in under our 15 minutes, I I breezed through a lot of slides very quickly, but one of them did show that the building, as it's shown right now in the presentation to you this evening, does fit under the height limit. It's an 11 foot floor to floor height on the structure with a very shallow parapet. And that elevation is set from on the east end off of Stanford Court. And that's why, again, it's a two story structure up on the west end. The neighborhood has expressed a lot of preference for a slope, for sloped roofs, wherever we could provide them on the building. And we've mentioned to the neighborhood that really the only way for us to be able to put some sloped roofs on top of the structure is to request a height modification. Because any roof that's anything beyond a very shallow, flat roof over the top of the building is going to cause us to violate the 35 foot height limit because of the the measurement off of the low side of the building down on Stanford Court.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, I think that's, that's an interesting observation, you know, especially in light of the 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 way that Steph suggested changing and ended up with city council agreeing to the change in the requirements for sloped roofs versus flat roofs on ADUs and allowing a little extra height for a sloped roof. And so I think those who write code in the city staff might take note of that. Any other questions for staff? Or for the applicant from the board? Okay, then I'm going to move on to public comment. And for this portion of the the meeting tonight, I'm just going to allow Gene Gata to be the presiding officer of the meeting. And Gene, you can take it from here.
That sounds good. Thanks, Harmon. So for anyone who would like to speak during the public, during the the public hearing for this item, there'll be three minutes each. We're going to utilize the raise hand function. So it looks like at least one person has found that the raise hand function can be found in the participants box. So you can find on the menu by hovering over the top or the bottom of the screen and then clicking on that participant icon. When the box opens, you'll see that raise hand button. And so I will, I will call on folks in the order that they've raised hands, and then I will unmute them. And you can, and then you can start speaking. Cindy, will you do have the timer on the screen again? And I'm going to ask folks to simp, once I unmute you, you can start and we won't be sharing video. So it looks like we have at least three. I know there's another that expressed interest in speaking on this item, but we'll start with John. And I'm not gonna, I'm gonna probably butcher the pronunciation of your last name, Co- Coachell, followed by Melissa Moulton, followed by Marie Blaney. So John, I'm gonna unmute you now. I'm gonna try to, let's see.
Hello?
Great.
Hello?
You can start, John. We can hear you.
Okay, I have a few points to make, so I'll speak quickly. The first one, I believe Lupita touched on is traffic safety. I live on Stanford Avenue, I guess, west kind of uphill from Stanford Court. And the portion of Stanford Court adjacent to the site and the apartments is fully parked. I mean, it's it's, it's busy there. It's both the intersection of Stanford Court and Stanford Avenue is dangerous. And I'm in my 40s and fairly fit and I have trouble getting across Table Mesa from Stanford to the bus station and King Supers. People do not yield to pedestrians there and there is speeding. And I can't imagine the disasters that will occur if you have senior citizens trying to make that venture. I don't believe it's feasible at this time to put in a light there because that would back traffic up to the intersection of Table Mesa and Broadway and cause even more problems. As far as the traffic letter that was referenced, I have in my profession, reviewed dozens of traffic studies. That's not a traffic study. There was no car count, traffic count, anything like that. It's just assumptions. I know Shannon touched on this. If she'd like to meet me some weekday at 7:00 AM, we can stand at the corner of Stanford Court in Stanford and watch all the traffic. It is a zoo. And I don't know how adding more traffic is going to help. And again, there needs to be a for real traffic study. That that's just kind of cute. Secondly, that hasn't been addressed tonight. I have no idea based on the site plans prevented, presented, how emergency vehicles are going to properly access to the site. There, there seems to be a space problem if you want to try to bring in a fire truck. But that's to be addressed, I guess. Second, I understand this to be a tax credit property. I've worked with developers on many tax credit properties. And sadly, often when the tax credit runs out, so do the restrictions on who can live there. And I have gotten no response from anyone's pledging to encumber or restrict the property for senior only housing and or subsidized income, you know, lower income housing. I'd like that to be addressed. 60 units on 4.9 acres is what was talked about. However, only about an acre of the and a half of that land due to the slope and the consistency of the soils, based on what I've been told from people who've been there 40 years or 50 years when the church was built, is that you're looking at about an acre and a half of buildable space. And so you're, you're looking about 50 units an acre in in reality.
John, thank you very much.
Okay, I got a lot more.
If you have more, you can always email the board. But we thank you for your comments. And just to be fair to everyone, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to mute. Great. Melissa, if you can unmute yourself, you can go ahead and then we'll have Marie Blaney. And then after that, Ben Wilson.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. I'm Dan, I'm Ryan and Melissa Moulton. We are in the process of closing on a property on Dover, kind of the triangular lot that would have but the proposed path going from the development site down to Dover. And we really appreciate and grateful for Ian spending time a couple of weeks ago, really walking us through the the development process. So we feel like we know what's going on. And we've been glad to hear about the proposal to keep the landscape to the north wild. One thought that we had in the comments was that folks in the neighborhood and friends of ours have said that there's kind, you know, a couple of kind of dilapidated slides and basically recreational equipment back there for kids that actually gets some use from the community. And we have an 18 month old daughter. I know there's a lot of other families in the neighborhoods. And I was just wondering if any thought had been given to dedicating, you know, some possible community space to a little bit of playground area or something like that. Because, you know, there's a playground in Martin Park, but I think, you know, having something closer at hand in that neighborhood could be really great. I think that's it in 60 seconds.
Awesome. Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, Marie Blaney, you're next.
Can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
I want to thank the Boulder Planning Board for allowing me to speak. My name is Marie Blaney. I live in 3195 Stanford Avenue. It appears that everyone looks at the benefits of affordable housing, but never addresses what losses the community endures with the decisions around this. When the property at 3485 Stanford Court was purchased for affordable housing, the single family neighborhood lost the following things. A 30 year tradition of community gardens, use of the land for families needing a safe place for bicycles, riding and ball playing, a longstanding tradition of picnics and 4th of July watching of fireworks for the families of the neighborhood, a traditional fall pumpkin patch for the children and adults alike, privacy for the backyards and bedrooms of all families whose land surrounds the 3485 Stanford Court project. Undisturbed natural habitat and traveling corridor for wildlife. Not only has the neighborhood suffered these losses, but it's now left with the possibility of 68 cars impacting the already impossible traffic jams on Stanford Avenue and Table Mesa Drive. A three story building will only take away privacy from the surrounding neighbors. The light pollution can, from continued lighting of the 68 parking spaces throughout the night will surely impact humans and wildlife alike. The truth about the 4.9 acres is that only about 1.2 acres is being used for the 60 units. And because, that's because of the severe slope. Community gardens, there are no community gardens and the community gardens, they're saying will only be used by the residents of the affordable housing. We asked about this and we're told the residents will not want us to come around. So the playground and everything has been abandoned due to the fact that the land is not being maintained at all. The community garden is completely dead because we're not allowed to go in. So we've suffered a lot of losses. Surely that would be a better use if the community gardens, true community gardens would be restored, a playground would put in, safe places for bicycles and picnics and family, just like we did for the past 40 some years. And we're sorry about our loss. We're definitely for affordable housing. But this is not the place to put it, especially when it's going to add problems to the already burdened neighborhood. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Blaney. Mr. Will, Ben Wilson, it would be, will be next.
Okay, thank you. Are you able to hear me, folks?
We are. Go ahead, Ben.
Thank you. Just following up on a couple of the points that Mr. Coachell and Ms. Blaney raised, in general, the there are specific concerns with respect to the excessive burden on neighborhood infrastructure with respect to safety especially. And what these all really boil down to are concerns regarding the potential detrimental impacts on the neighborhood character. The rezoning of the project site was was done in October 2017. Apparently, it was specifically to allow this this construction. And what I think the majority of the the neighborhood associations members are concerned about is about the, you know, the increased density which about less dense residential zoning on three sides. And you know, Mr. Coachell mentioned that, yes, it's a 4.9 acre site. And, you know, looking at the, looking at Schedule 8.1 and the Boulder Revised Code, you know, arguably, this is only 12 units per acre, but really, if they're all being built 60 units on in 1.2 acres, it is about 50 units per acre. Which in and of itself is, you know, in the association's opinion, is is contrary to the to the character of the neighborhood. Some other concerns are with respect to increased light and noise pollution, are with respect to the effect on wildlife ability to, you know, access and use that area as a natural corridor. And, and finally, I heard Mr. De Souza, you know, discuss at one point neighborhood concerns and preferring a three story building. And there have been some other comments on this, but I'm not aware of any of the neighbors who have expressed an opinion in favor of a building with such large mass. You know, all things being considered, the project as it is currently proposed is is likely to you know, significantly increase the density of the neighborhood significantly. significantly worsen the traffic problems that already exist in the area. And while we are, you know, obviously available and interested in this discussion, we hope that it'll be an ongoing discussion. And that the concerns of the neighbors will be considered and given full freight, given full weight as it proceeds. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ben. Looks like we have one more. Lynn Segal has her hand up. So Lynn, you can start for your three minutes. Lynn, you should be able to unmute yourself. There you go.
I would love to contribute to the rearranging of the deck chairs on the Titanic of Boulder's planning process. But I'm not going to. I would suggest the North Ex building is kept, absolutely. But I'm not going to. Because this is outrageous, that you're considering more housing. You have not been to Byrsh University 101, none of you. You aren't listening to the virus at all. At Frazier, people can't walk down the hallways. They can't get out at all because they're on a higher level. The balconies, oh, unsightly for people putting bikes in storage on them. You know, this is, this is not good housing plan for seniors. Multi-generational housing is how you house seniors. You don't stick them somewhere. And that's done all over Boulder. And you're putting it up as fast as you can with Lytech funds, with federal tax benefits. Because the federal people love to separate people. Human beings, these are humans that need to live around multi-generation, their whole families. That's how seniors need to end their lives. Okay, let's see what else here. Affordable? Let's look at Fru House and 311. There needs to be much more affordable, you know, that you have to build every time you build a high-end place. Because the high-end places go up and up and up, and it's not going to change. And I learned this down at Hogan-Pancast across from East Boulder Rec Center, when this one guy just wants to remodel his house a little bit. And the city of Boulder says, if you want to annex, you have to put in twelve to sixteen units. This is asinine. This is unacceptable. Why do I have to yell? My grandson, on January 7th, I came into a council meeting. The first thing my grandson said, and he's only two years old, he said, "No, no." This is like juvenile. I can say everything I want. This community can say everything they want. But there are powers that be in this community. Tom Carr, Jane Brodigam, higher-end level. And I understand, my son's an architect too. If someone, I'm an ultrasound technologist. If someone figures out a way to read ultrasounds automatically, then I'll learn something else, or I'll accommodate. This is just not acceptable behavior by our planning department.
Lynn, thank you.
What?
Three minutes.
Yeah. And Pat, why didn't you say anything? This is the only time I get to see my colleagues. Sorry, Gene.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, if there's anybody else who would like to speak, if you could raise your hand now. Seeing no one, Harmon, I'm going to turn it back to you.
Okay. Thanks, Gene. Thanks for managing that portion of the hearing. We're closing public comment. And we are taking on the deliberation component of the public hearing. It's 7:49. I would suggest that if we're close to two hours, close enough to two hours, if people would like a break, we can take five minutes now. Okay, so let's get back at 7:55, and we'll begin deliberations.
Ann, what happened to you?
Well, I was muted and then...
Okay, if we can get back to the meeting at 7:55. Okay, so I'm just going to start talking about concept review for a minute. Just reiterate what Shannon said in the beginning of the meeting about the purpose of concept review, which is to have a conversation with the applicant and take a look at a proposed project and give feedback. The general guidelines for the feedback are in Section 9213, Concept Review, under little letter G. And there are eight concepts, eight characteristics or guidelines for review and concept plan. And I think Shannon and staff did a great job going through those. And that's kind of the business end of the staff report. So folks should pay particular attention to that and thinking about this project. So as much as people want to contribute by commenting on those guidelines for our review, that's welcomed. But I'm going to focus our discussion on the two key concepts that we need to look at in reviewing the project, or the concept, I should say. And so bring in as much of those criteria as you'd like to during this. So let's start talking about this as a board. I hope that you got all the questions that you needed to ask answered by the applicant and by staff. And we can just have a conversation among ourselves here and deliberate. So the first issue is, is the proposed concept plan compatible with the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan? And I will take hands. John? You'll need to unmute, John. Try again. I just, I see you're still muted. I think everybody but me is muted. Can other people unmute?
Yes.
Okay, John, I think you got it now.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Too bad you missed all my wit.
I hope you can recreate it because we don't want to do that.
It's gone forever. I'll be brief. I think this does meet the, the answer is yes to the question that you asked us to respond to. I think this does meet the comp plan criteria.
Other thoughts? David, you look like you're ready to jump in.
Sure. I agree with John. I could go through the different comp plan or VBCP criteria. But each one of them, I felt the criteria were met in many ways. I did add one criteria to my list from 2.41, which talks about enhanced design, where it talks about how buildings should be designed. And as I read through it, I feel that it meets that. But I also kind of just, it got me thinking about how it might fit into the area. I put this fabulous building behind me to inspire us of some of the things that we see in that area. So I do like what I see with regards to the design and compatibility with the neighborhood. But I'm sure there'll be a lot of interesting thought going into some of the comments on design that were made today. I also agree with staff that there needs to be a little work on the transportation connections. I will reiterate that that connector down to the east is of great interest because I can imagine the residents using it to go down for gatherings in Martin Park. It's a direct connection down to that underpass to Martin Park. But I think that it, I think it may need a rail, and it may need improvements. And I don't know if there's funding to do that. But it'd be really interesting to hear whether that could be improved. I thought the connection down to Table Mesa and King Supers area is not bad. The sidewalks are okay. Those intersections are kind of notoriously weird. But, but I, I think that that in general, it's pretty good connectivity down there. And any improvements would always be welcome. That's my take on the BBC.
Okay, great. I'm just going to say, I like how staff keeps us on our toes, that there's never a consistent set of key issues that are exactly the same. And this staff report, the business end of the concept plan is really when we address key issue two, the way it's been written for us, which is, would the project be compatible with the character of the surrounding area or architectural and site design consistent with the site review criteria in terms of quality and compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood? So if you want to get in a little deeper on that, David, in key issue two, that's great. If people feel like this concept meets the key issue number one question, is it compatible with the comp plan? Happy to move on, and we can get into the more substantive design considerations. Lupita?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a couple of things regarding, because I made a comment regarding that one, that corner of Stanford and Table Mesa.
Can I just ask you, is that a comp plan compliance issue, or is that more design?
Yeah, well, in terms of that compliance and things that I think that people were concerned about not meeting on the transportation piece, on the transportation and the congestion piece and safety. There is actually right left, I'm sorry, I'm the left, you know, west of that intersection, there is a pedestrian crossing that is very safe with the flashing lights right across from the library. And I don't think anybody mentioned it. And I think it's important because that really will play an important role for this community. So I think that there's a piece that was missing. And I would like that to mention it because I think that if there was some concern about safety, there are other, this piece, we should take care of it. And in regards to access to open space, I think the location also is, it is compatible what we have. Because being close to Martin Park provides that kind of opening. But we also have another park not too far from there that is also open space. And thus, I just wanted, because I forgot to mention that earlier. And I just want to make sure that there's more amenities there that I thought about earlier.
Great. Okay, so does anybody have anything else on the pure comp plan compliance, key issue number one? I'd just like to remind folks then, before we move on to key issue number two, that when we went through the comp plan update in 2015, 2017, we were talking about affordable housing as the most important issue facing Boulder. And a subset of that most important issue is affordable housing for seniors. I think people were talking about the silver wave was the term that was being used. We had to be prepared for that. And so I think that not only does this meet the comp plan goals and policies that are listed in the staff report, but also... but also, as we were talking about particularly community benefit and what we wanted to see in terms of community benefit, number one was affordable housing, and number two was affordable housing for seniors. So, um, so I, I think that this is a compatible project to the comp plan and also like the, the repurposing of the existing architectural. Well, I don't know if it's a masterpiece, but it's an interesting church, and I like the, the fact that it's being preserved. So, uh, and that, you know, that speaks to neighborhood character and the preservation thereof. So let's move on to number two. And I think this is where we get to dig in to more than just compatibility with character, but people's ideas around the architectural and site design features that we see and, and the materials and so forth that are used. This is, how compatible would this be with the site review criteria? So we're here in a role of giving the applicant a preview of what we might say if they were to bring something like this towards site review or to us in site review. So I'll take hands. Sarah?
Thank you. So I, I want to express my support for the staff's thoughts on building and design. Specifically, item one is considering adjustments to the massing of the building. And I urge the applicant to look for ways to reduce the height and the massing, if possible, to, uh, to consider moving the community garden, gardens further east, so they're between the building and any parking on that west side rather than having the parking between the building and the community gardens. And then thirdly, concerns about the drive aisle along the south property line, which would essentially put driveways, a driveway in the front yard of the individual apartments on the ground floor. And I'd like to suggest, and this is probably gonna connect with Lisa's concerns about, or points about parking. I would suggest actually eliminating the western parking lot altogether. I believe it would, first of all, from the, from the material that the applicant sent to us, they already, they already have pretty good evidence that buildings that house a population, a senior population has far less car ownership, which means I think we could probably suggest a parking reduction. If you eliminated the western parking lot spots, it would address the concern about the drive aisle along the southern edge of the property. It would allow you to reduce parking altogether, and it would possibly allow you to perhaps extend the building a bit and reduce the height a bit more, maybe fewer apartments on the third floor and more apartments on the ground level. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Who's next? John Gerstle?
Well, I, I agree with everything Sarah said, and she said it in a much more, much clearer and more expressive way than I could. But I'd like to add a little bit. I, I think that the public permeability through this site is a key issue. And I'm delighted that the applicant has committed to maintaining and enhancing that. I would like to see that formally written down somewhere to make sure that if there's a change of ownership or some, something of that nature, that the public access through and the path through this site is maintained. Neighbors have also mentioned that there used to be a playground and other public benefits in this area that have been, have fallen into disrepair or disuse. And that's something that, that the applicant may want to consider establishing if they want to enhance interaction and communication with the, with the neighborhood in general. Something which I think is, is quite desirable, given the, that this is senior housing, and there are other attempts to ensure that there's interaction with the, with the community nearby. The, the other main thought that I had was that I, I was surprised that the neighborhood appeared to prefer a, a single building rather than several smaller buildings with respect to the, the massing concerns. And it may well be that that was what those who showed up and participated in the neighborhood did desire. But I, I would also be thinking that it's useful if the applicant were to reconsider that too, in an attempt to diminish the massing. Another option is what Sarah suggested, which was to diminish the extent of the third floor to have fewer apartments and perhaps more terrace area.
Harman, you're muted.
I've been saying Lisa.
So thank you to the other planning board members for what you already covered. I wanted to touch on the community space and community room simply because there is a large community space down in the basement of the George Reynolds French Library. Whole Foods, I believe, is now going to be taking over Lucky's Market, and I don't know whether they're gonna keep that community space or not. And then there are a variety of churches in that neighborhood I live relatively close by that I know are very generous with letting other people come in and use their space. So far be it for me to ever oppose community space, but I think it just might be interesting in looking at that ask to kind of understand what the other areas are and how that would work and what the demand is like, and whether perhaps some kind of communal space for the seniors could maybe also double as a community space. And then again, maybe there's more space to kind of spread the, the mass of the building out if, if that's truly not needed. Maybe it is needed, I'm not sure. And then also, I just wanted to touch, I guess, I keep talking about parking, but on some principles a little bit, I would just be curious what kind of options there might be in that area for, you know, shared, unmanaged, unbundled, managed, and then if not paid, perhaps timed. You know, so when I think about the daycare and when that would be used and when they would need it versus the seniors, I just wonder what we could do with street parking. I think, I think the applicants have heard that loud and clear, but I'd just like to continue to explore that because I always hate it when I see a whole bunch of service parking going in and instead of another use.
David?
All right, well, I actually feel the, feel really pretty good about this proposal in general from, from what's being done here on this very interesting property. It does present some challenges, and I feel better about what we're seeing now than the one that was withdrawn a few years ago as far as I can remember. I really love the way the terraces create that connection to that overlook over the hill there. I love the idea of having the ability for people to come up that path to pass through an open access and provide some community aspects. I think that the design also pulls it away from the sanctuary building in a very nice way because the current building that's there just kind of blocks it. And that sanctuary, even though it's a pretty big building, it's very low and it's very funky. So the more we can pull stuff kind of a little bit away from there and create some interesting terrace space between and highlight it, I think that the way that the drop off center kind of allows you to glimpse that building, it's an improvement. It's, it's not the most exciting historic building, but it's, but it's interesting. So I kind of like that we, that it's created, created that openness, and I think it'll, it'll be an improvement. Let's see, I was actually, I'm a little bit, I'm, I'm gonna just take a little bit of a different tack, John, on the open, on the public comment. I think if the public did express comfort with a single building, that there are advantages to be able to keep all the building together because it gives you the ability to kind of play with the open space around it rather than trying to break it up too much. So, so I, I don't know. To me, I, to me, I don't feel like the massing is unreasonable or that a single building solution is really inappropriate. But there were good comments made on that, so, you know, certainly those things can all be considered. If the idea of removing parking from the west side is possible, that could really provide some, some additional flexibility. Let's see, I think that the, this kind of project is very appropriate for this kind of an area where you're transitioning from your business center. We call it like the string of pearls concept, where we have this business center at Table Mesa and Broadway. And when we have good transit and good services, it's nice to have somewhat dancer and pop, you know, serving a very needed segment of our society, our, our aging population. So I think that that also is a huge advantage of this location, and I think it will be an asset to the neighborhood. And I always point out with, with, with aged communities, you don't get that same traffic pattern. People don't leave and come home at rush hour in the same way usually. So that can be an advantage. So, so some of the concerns about traffic, I hope would be mitigated by the, by just the lifestyles of the folk that live there that maybe don't have to commute to jobs and things like that. So, so I hope that, that can kind of mitigate some of those concerns.
Thanks, David. Lupita?
Yes, I wanted to kind of piggyback a little bit on Sarah's proposal because that one of the parts that I stuck with me as I was listening to the community was the separation of the community near and this new incoming community. And one potential place of community building could be this community gardens, which apparently have been available before and somehow this prepare. So what Sarah proposed, I think, gave us a, a great opportunity to maybe provide some of that new space for a community garden that can be shared with the nearby community and therefore being people together and incorporate these two communities now. As I mentioned, we do have two parks fairly near. One is in Martin Park. And we also have, I always have to look at the name because it is Bill Boyer Park, not too far from there, and it does have playgrounds, open space. It's really nice, right across the summer in the forest, which was my parish for a long time. And so in terms of the space that, that I think we're looking at, I think increasing community benefit will be by incorporating this new community into the existing community. And potentially the community gardens will be one, one tool we can use to do that. And I really like the idea of providing affordable housing for this, for this specific community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, then I'm gonna, oh, Lisa, you want to say something else?
Just one quick thing. I just wanted to say how much I appreciate coupling the daycare and having small children adjacent to the senior facility. I think that's such a wonderful thing. And from what I know of, other examples of that, it can be really effective as far as volunteering or part-time jobs, and it's just a, a nice combination.
I agree. That's great. So I'm gonna jump in and give my, my feedback. So as far as design, I love the open frame superstructure concept in the drop off area. I would recommend that the architects match the angles to the buttresses that are coming out of the roof of the sanctuary. If you already haven't done that, just as a tip of the cap to the architecture you're preserving. And I think the eye of the, you know, the passerby is gonna notice. You know, people, people have amazing abilities to see angles. That's why we can play billiards and actually put balls in pockets, because we can do that. And so I think that would be a good thing to do architecturally. The north elevation with its shade structures, the wall articulation. Actually, the wall articulation is a nice feature on the south side of the building too. And the use of the materials on the north side is particularly good. I especially like the large picture windows on the top floor. I think that's a bold statement there and, and would make for some amazing views from the units. It's a, it's a bold design, but it's handsome and it's elegant at the same time, and that's a, a nice combination. I think it's, it's a great job that you got the building under the by right height limit. It's a very creative use of the slope on the different levels rather than seeing the, the slope as an obstacle to design. It's been incorporated well. I appreciated the applicant's answer regarding the reason for preferring better communal open space over individual balconies. But I like the flexibility of potentially having the Juliet balconies so people can get their windows open and stand outside or have sliding doors and get outside, even if it's just a little bit. And I, I do agree with the public member John Coachell's comments about crossing in traffic at that area along Table Mesa. But I also echo Lupita that there are crosswalks at Stanford Avenue and, and the next street to the west of Stanford along Table Mesa as well. Might want to consider adding some additional pedestrian infrastructure beyond just blinking yellow lights. Those are some tired old zebra intersections and maybe different materials to, to denote that there's a public space for pedestrians walking across the street. You know, some other form of traffic calming to get cars to slow down because they really are throttling up the hill at that point, and it's hard to cross as a pedestrian there. So that's, that's all I have in terms of design. If everybody's comfortable with that, I think I'll just sort of sum up our thoughts and then give the applicant a chance to speak back to us. Lupita?
Just to clarify, the blinking lights includes a traffic light. So there is a red traffic light when the blinking lights are on, so it is safe.
Is, is that at Stanford, or is that further west, though?
Further west, but it's, it's not even, it's not a block. It's like half a block. You can see it. So the intersection is problematic mostly for drivers because when you have traffic, you know, it can take a long time making left turns. But for the, for the pedestrians, there is a safe alternative, just, I don't know, 50 yards from there, not even.
Okay, great. Sarah?
Well, that raises a question that I'm not sure is for the applicant to answer, but maybe for the city to consider, which is how can, can there, can we enhance the pedestrian connections and push pedestrians towards the light rather than towards the Stanford Court, Table Mesa intersection?
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? All right. Then I think I'll just go over some of the, the thoughts that I heard. We had a split on the board as far as whether the, the building should be broken up into multiple buildings and made smaller and less impactful, or whether the, the massing is fine, a single building is fine. John, did you want to say something? You're just agreeing with me.
Yeah, I, I didn't want to say that I was pushing for a small building. So I just mentioned that I was surprised that there was the neighborhood consensus for having a big building. I'm, I'm not opposed to that myself.
Okay, thanks for clarification.
Just to get the emphasis right there.
Appreciate that. But you weren't the only one who mentioned that. So I, I think I would probably just stand by what, uh, what I mentioned, but thanks for, for clarifying your position. I think there was probably the, the most agreement among the planning board as to that, that we would be comfortable with a parking reduction and potentially even the, the elimination of the western parking lot if the applicant can show that that's a workable solution because it would allow for a little more site flexibility and, and would meet our goals of trying to reduce surface parking in the city, especially for a population that generally doesn't need as much parking. Sarah wasn't echoed by others when she suggested swapping the location of the garden and the parking area, but I think having open space and gardening area right next to the building so people don't have to walk across the lot, to the extent that that's feasible, is, is a sensible idea. So people don't have to walk across the lot to the extent that that's feasible is, is a sensible idea. John was, was focusing a lot on permeability and public access. And I think that brings us to a sentiment that we heard from a few planning board members and many members of the public, which is just that the public would like to see that this project provide some amenity for what they're losing now. You know, we've, we hear oftentimes we hear members of the public consider private property as a public amenity. And then a new owner comes along and says, yeah, but I don't have any obligation. And I think to a large extent that is legally true. But you know, where, where a building has been a public use like a church for many years, for 40 years, you know, it, or more actually, it, it sometimes will help to integrate a project into the neighborhood by continuing some of the traditions and, and we would invite you to look at that. So if, if that's a reasonable summing up, I'll turn it over to the applicant for rebuttal or comment.
Great, well, thank, thanks so much, members of the planning board. I think that was very, very valuable feedback for us. And certainly we will go back and look at all of those things and kind of think through some options. So I did also just want to quickly mention that it came up in the public comment about permanent affordability and just be clear for public and members of the planning board. This would be permanently affordable, permanently senior. That is BHP's commitment at, at all our projects. And it's actually a requirement of any kind of city affordable housing funding. So just want to make that clear to the, to the board and public on that, but.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, absolutely. Otherwise, thank you so much for the comments and JB, if you had anything.
Yeah, just thank you very much. We appreciate the, the feedback. We, we do want to continue to have our process be really tightly woven with the neighborhood and continue to get their feedback as well. And it's, it's good to get feedback from other people in the community that may not be immediately adjacent to the site. And so we appreciate your looking at the project and giving, giving us your thoughts tonight.
Sarah?
So, so when I went to visit the site earlier this week, I was cognizant of how actually noisy the site is. There's a lot of traffic noise coming up from Broadway. And I think it's Broadway, yeah, Broadway and maybe also Table Mesa. I'm just cognizant there's a lot of traffic noise. And it would be interesting to think about how landscaping to the east edge of the lot of the parcel might serve to muffle some of that sound a bit. And I just wanted to put that on the table.
Absolutely. Yeah, thanks for that comment.
Okay, Lisa?
One other quick thing that occurred to me that might also be a neighborhood benefit or good that I know happens and I think a couple, a couple of spots across the street in King Supers parking lot would be pool cars or car share. So looking at other ways to kind of defray the need for more spots and then maybe also being able to share some of those with the neighborhood. Might kind of kill two birds with one stone.
Great.
Absolutely. We, we have existing partnerships with Ego Car Share at some of our other sites. So that would certainly be something we would want to look at.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the applicant and staff. Great job on this one. Going to end this public hearing right now and move on to matters. So are there any matters from the planning board people want to talk about before we get into matters from the staff and the city attorney? John?
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know that on Tuesday evening at the city council meeting, I, I made, I made a comment in the public comment section. That was following David's, that was on the South Boulder Creek issues. And I know David made a presentation on behalf of the planning board. And I just wanted to emphasize the fact that the planning board's last formal decision on it had been made a couple of years ago and that, that it, it did not coincide with what the city council was moving ahead with. And I just made that point, but just wanted to let you know.
Thanks, John. Appreciate that. David, do you want to give a report on your presentation on behalf of the board on CU South?
Oh, sure. Yeah. I, since you were busy in a meeting, I did go ahead and, and basically I just structured it into the two key issues. And I tried, I did my best to try to hopefully get across. I did talk about the 2018 and what we had recommended then. But I, but thanks for clarifying that with city council as well, John. Just tried to give them a feel for our discussion and that we didn't vote on anything, but we had opinion, you know, general support with the exception certainly of John's opinion for the 100 year variant one, should they choose to go forward with that from a guiding principle perspective. And I also put in a little plug to getting to the, the annexation concepts, which we'll, we'll have a very key role in helping with. So, and also as Lisa mentioned earlier, there was a lot of interest from other boards and also the city council in the emergency alert system comment. So that was, that was good as well.
I want to thank you for taking on that, that task and going and spending your Tuesday night with city council on, on our behalf. Thank you, David.
Thanks.
Any other planning board matters? Okay, well, one of the things I know we're going to talk about is our agenda for our, our retreat. So I'm going to turn it over to Cindy for matters from the department.
Okay. Well, I, as you know, our retreat date has been changed to July 6th, 2:30 to 6. And Dr. Carolyn Love is going to attend. She's gonna be with us for about an hour and a half, hour, hour and a half, whatever you think we, we need. And then David was so kind to send me a couple of retreat topics. Oh, did you all get your books?
Not yet.
Okay. Couple of you have, some of you have. Good. Okay. I guess her, Herman, it looks like you're the only one who hasn't, so.
My wife may be keeping it.
Okay. And then we could do a color of law discussion, which is the book. David also said, planning department, status of the organization, staffing challenges, capacity for future work plan items. And then another item could be review, planning board, meeting conduct, anything we may need to brush up on. So any other topics that y'all might, Lupita?
Yeah. Given that we have homework for reading the book, oh my God, I've been reading so much. I will be very interested in seeing how our own city has evolved with regard to redlining. And also where are we going with all of this affordable housing projects that we are in the process of, you know, seeing come to life hopefully? To see if we are seeing, you know, improvement.
Sarah?
I would love an update from staff about the opportunity zone. I, I, my recollection from when it was first approved is that there was some, like an 18 month window for, for property owners or I can't quite remember now. It's been a while, but it would really be helpful, I think, to have an update, both what's happened from a policy perspective on the national level and what is happening on the city level.
So I'm going to just jump in for a second and say that generally topics like the last two that have just been mentioned for, for, you know, updates on the inclusionary housing program status or the opportunities on. Those are things that we can easily do in a public hearing. We do, you know, staff makes a presentation to us on Housing 101. We've had, you know, in my time on the planning board, we've had multiple updates on how we're doing on the affordable housing IH program. So I think what we want to use the, the retreat for is talking about things amongst ourselves that we wouldn't want to normally have a public hearing about. So things like the functioning of the planning board or, you know, how to make motions or how we're doing with, with our meeting process and stuff. Those are things we don't want to put, you know, in the public calendar, on the public agenda that are, that are more suited towards an agenda. So that's my opinion. And I'm happy to continue to entertain ideas.
Well, then let's make sure that one of the things we talk about at planning board is what are the things we would like to have? What are the issues we'd like to have come before us for a public meeting? We had a long list last year and I don't know how many of them we actually ticked off. So let's make sure that at our meeting on the 6th of July, we pull together our list for this coming, what's left of this year.
Okay, and it would also be perfectly appropriate in a public hearing for us to bring it up in matters where a planning board member is free to say, you know, you could say, I want to have a conversation in matters, Harmon. You know, maybe we can queue that up so that we can have a matters conversation regarding what kind of public, what, what kind of presentations we want to see from staff about status updates and explanatory kinds of, of agenda items like the Housing 101 or what, what the status the OZ is and stuff like that. So I would just invite you to bring that up in matters and, you know.
Great.
Know when you want to, when you want to do that.
Okay.
Lupita?
I respectfully disagree because if we're going to be going to the trouble reading a thick book, I would like to have, you know, a discussion or something that are very pertinent to our own city. So at the very least, I would like to be able to see how we're making any progress or not making progress for our own case. This is like doing homework and then giving a problem not related to the homework. So that's just my own perspective. I would really like to see if, if, if we are getting anywhere. And that's that, just for that one. I can only speak to mine, but to me, I would not read the book if I'm, we're not going to go see, if I'm not going to see what CU, I mean, I'll see you, but Boulder has been doing, I'm not going to read it.
I'm thinking that will, will Kurt be at the retreat or on the Zoom call?
Why don't we ask him, hey, you know, Kurt, are you interested in reading The Color of Law? And being able to contextualize Boulder's own efforts and Boulder's own issues with redlining and the subjects that are in the book for us at our retreat? Maybe take five or 10 of the 50 or 60 minutes we're going to spend on this and talk to us about us.
Is that July 2020 or July 2021?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering because, you know, I don't want to give you work that you don't have time to do, but it's July 6th, 2020.
So if I could just give a little bit of background, we would love to do the kind of update I think that Lupita is, is asking for. We wouldn't be able to do it in that timeframe. We've, we've also sort of started and stopped a couple of times over the last six months of projects that we're working on, looking at the, the history of, well, redlining didn't technically occur in the city of Boulder because it wasn't of the, the size or the population size. But looking at other impacts that were, had, or other things that had a similar impact. It's with our staff reductions, we've had to put a lot of things on hold. We would be able to give something like that in the future, depending on the scope of it. Certainly something sometime this year. But we would probably need at least a couple of months at a minimum to tack, to tackle that subject fully. But we can give an update on where we stand with, with projects in the pipeline. We can give updates on the demographics of the people who live in our affordable housing. That sort of thing we can definitely do, you know, probably in the next two or three months.
That's kind of like what I was hoping for, some, some basic understanding where we are. Because, you know, when we went on the, and the tour of affordable housing, I got the impression that we are really working on it. And whenever we have the discussions, like projects like today, we know that we've been proactive. I just would like to see how, how that is. And I think it will help us when our communities come to us and then we can speak more informed, in a more informed way and, and feel like we are actually making progress and, and help our communities to see that, you know, we're working towards something that we promised to do and, and we are making gains. That's it. Thank you.
Lisa?
I, I wanted to also add, and I, I need to pull up the slides to review them, but Amy Kane has been working on this stuff for the city specifically and did a really nice presentation that she already had the slides for, which may have some overlap here as part of my onboarding process for the planning board and for other people joining city boards. I can look back at those slides since they already exist and maybe reach out to Amy and see if that might be an interesting additional thing for us to look at. Because it does talk about the history of, if not formal redlining, some of the ways that Boulder has excluded certain people from housing. And, and might just kind of inform the discussion around the book. And then I also wanted to offer, I don't know how we want to do it, but if you'd like to have me moderate the book discussion portion, I'd be happy to do that. I was an English major, so I can do this till the cows come home. You know, so I, I don't know if we'd like to have someone kind of leading us through that, not necessarily directing the conversation, but making sure everyone gets to weigh in and kind of offering some thought points if we need them. Harmon, I don't know if you already had your heart set on that or something else.
I think that, you know, to the extent that your idea is just to try to prod the discussion along with some interesting questions that, that you think get to the heart of what the book means and how, you know, we, we can contextualize it for what we're doing. I'd love it if you would take that on, that would be great.
Great, yeah. And I can maybe look at those slides from Amy and try to look at that. And then I also know Boulder Public Library has been posting some amazing stuff on social media recently that highlights just different things with, with black and indigenous people of color in Boulder. So I, I can look at that and try to put together like some kind of interesting stuff while still keeping it within that timeframe and providing a review discussion.
What, what you're talking about, if you want to do some of that independent research, might go a long way towards, you know, at least touching on some of the stuff that Lupita wanted to see added into the discussion.
That, that's what I'm hoping. It probably won't be super comprehensive Lupita and we will still want to go back to staff for deeper dives when they have the ability. But, but it might help.
Yeah, I, I really just think it would be an effective way of adding a little bit to, to the book discussion and make it contextual to our own city. And, you know, it doesn't have to be very long, but I think that it would be a missed opportunity if we don't capitalize on the, on the fact that we're already in that topic and we have read something to connect and then we can move on. Thank you so much. I appreciate everybody.
Sarah?
So my recollection in our retreat last year was that Kurt actually presented based on research you'd already done. And rather than asking you to do additional research, if you had draft, if you'd written, pulled up, written up a memo last year or sometime in the last couple of years that captured the knowledge that you generated as you were doing the research originally, that would also be a helpful contextualizing document if such a thing exists and doesn't necessarily require more work except hitting send to us, you know, sending us a document.
I'll, I'll, I'll see what I have.
Okay.
Thanks. Yeah, and I, I remember what, you know, a lot of what you, what we had asked you to do last year was to really personalize it as somebody who's an affordable housing provider. So, you know, to the extent that that was about you and, and, and we got to, you know, get a window into the passion behind, you know, what drives you and the city to produce all this affordable housing? You know, that, that might not be the kind of thing that you can just share with us. So I understand if you can't. Okay, so I'm thinking that Dr. Love goes for an hour and a half and our book discussion goes for an hour. So we have three and a half hours and that leaves an hour to do other things. Do people have other ideas about how we can use that hour?
Well, I would actually suggest that we maybe leave it unprogrammed because these conversations are going to be interesting and challenging and we'll all have a lot to learn. And, you know, if Dr. Love is only available for an hour, we, which is because she's only available for an hour, that's one thing. But the other conversation, I think I'd like to try, give ourselves the space to expand into it if we need to. Just a thought.
Lupita?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting. We have an opportunity to maybe. Yeah, you know, it's interesting, we have an opportunity to maybe discuss some of what's happening in the country, including these two big issues we've been dealing with. One is the pandemic, and how cities around the country are responding to this challenge. And in our own case, like today, with regarding to the vulnerable population that is going to be served by this new project, maybe an opportunity for us to speak about that. And the other big issue is the whole anti-racism protest that we had, and we have had him in Boulder regularly in the last few weeks. If there is anything that, you know, we can kind of incorporate in our retreat about it, I think it will be an interesting thing to to approach.
David?
Yeah, Lupita, that's really kind of a vision that I had around, re, I know it takes a while to read a book and to get ready for this, but I think that the time we're in gives us an unusual opportunity to examine things that we weren't aware, were implicitly biases, and things that we operate under. And these zoning laws that we're being asked to uphold, how, you know, what what might we not be missing in terms of what the outcomes from some of that? And not that we have the purview to necessarily make massive changes, but I think that it is a good time for some introspective introspection about those things, and 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 see how we, how we can do our part to participate in in paradigm shifts that are possible. Absolutely. So, yeah, I just wanted to agree with you on that.
Thank you.
Sarah?
So this reminds me, Lupita and I had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, very specifically what David's talking about. And one of the things that we were interested in in discussing or learning about is how the city can generate, or begin to develop more for sale permanently affordable housing, as a, as a way to begin to look, to move the, the, add to moving the needle on asset development among lower income, moderate income families, or individuals, doesn't have to be families. And and that's about as far as we got in our discussion. But I think it'd be helpful to learn a little bit about what the challenges and opportunities are for that kind of development. So if we could touch on that in the retreat, that would be great. And if we can't, maybe we can touch on it in matters.
Any other ideas? So David, can you reiterate, or Cindy, can you reiterate the two ideas that David's saying?
I'm going to let David do it.
Okay, yeah, I was just thinking if we wanted to try to do some standard brush-up tasks. Well, one, the first one is actually not just a brush-up task. It would be, Charles, I don't know how much planning boards should be aware of the stressors that staff is experiencing during the staff reductions, and the kinds of things that we can do to make thing, you know, to to work best with you during that. So I thought a state of the planning department segment might be useful from both of our sides.
Be happy to do that, Dave, no problem.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That would be very good. That's kind of what I was trying to get at, yeah.
So how much time do you think that you'd need for that, Charles?
You know, we can give an update on the state of the department, as well as impacts on the work program, you know, 15 minutes, tops.
I feel guilty every time I propose something for the work plan right now, because I feel like if I'm having that reaction, maybe we should talk.
As long as it's the 2023 work program, Dave, you're fine.
Then the other thing you said, David, I misunderstood what Raharman was asking. And then the other thing you said, David, was review planning board meeting conduct, anything we may brush up on, and you would put Hella as the person for that.
Yeah, so I don't know, I feel pretty comfortable with motion making and things like that, but I figured there might be folks who didn't, who wanted a little bit of a brush up on some of that. Do we want to review quasi judicial things, that kind of stuff? Or if people are comfortable, maybe we can, you know, I don't know, anything you'd like to hear from Hella, or any legal stuff? Or Hella, if you had anything you really wanted?
I think that would be awesome. I second it, David.
So in the past, what we've done, we've talked about, you know, planning boards functioning, how to make a motion, you know, what kind of questions we ask, at what point in the meeting, how to deliberate, stuff like that. You know, we've given a lot of time, you know, that's been a 30 minute, 45 minute, an hour long kind of discussion. It becomes pretty interesting, pretty quick, to planning board members typically, and there ends up being a lot of conversation around that. So if we're going to pick that item up, I think it's going to be hard to keep that less than a half an hour. And I think it's a great, great idea, because it's what we do, and we don't practice, we just, we just get out and play. And, you know, we never do anything like the fundamentals in the public hearing. So getting back to the fundamentals is a good thing. So I'm going to propose that if we do an hour and a half with Dr. Love, and we do an hour to go over the book, we, you know, because the book discussion could be pretty wide ranging, and I think that it's going to incorporate a lot of thoughts. So we leave it, if that leaves an hour, we spend half of it on planning words functioning. Now we're down to a half an hour, and we spent 15 minutes on the state of the department and the work program. That leaves us 15 minutes, and we could use that 15 minutes for, you know, something like Sarah's idea about kicking around ideas for how we we foment additional affordable ownership opportunities for people, which ties in pretty well to the book we're reading. And that's the three and a half hours, guys, right there. Or, you know, maybe pick another 15 minute topic for fun. I mean, one of, one of the other ideas that I had listening to people was, as we, we, you know, we're, we're operating under the zoning code, and we're enforcing the zoning code as as planning board members, and how do we feel about that, given the role that that code has in perpetuating certain undesirable status clothes? And, you know, maybe we could each come in with a provision in the older city revised code that we think perpetuates bad outcomes, and we want to share, you know, we give three minutes per board member to pick their whipping boy, and put it out on the table for everybody to look at. You know, that's another idea for how we could use 15 or 20 minutes of our time doing something interesting and new. So thoughts?
I think it would be interesting to, this would be part of the hour discussion, or is that what you're thinking, Harmon?
Oh, no, I was thinking of that as being the other 15 minute block for creative ideation and conversation. But if you think that would be a good thing to chuck into the the hour conversation, for those who want to dig through the code, that, I think that would work in the context.
I mean, it seems to fit into that category, although we may have a full hour without, without that aspect, too. No, I'd be willing to do it. I'd be willing to do it during the 15 minutes as well.
I wonder perhaps if it's an optional thing. So as, as people are reading through the book, and thinking about the discussion and coming in, if that bubbles up for you, you know, a certain part of our existing code, that you want to bring forward into the discussion, then bring that as one of the things you want to talk about, but not necessarily that everybody has to bring an item of the code, if that makes sense, you know, so for it to be an invitation to discussion, but we don't each have to feel like we have to find a separate thing that we have to bring forward.
Yeah. Lupita?
I, as you were saying, this, I think it's great, when we really need to have some sort of like admission, because usually when I read things, I'm always looking for the thesis, what are the most important thing. And so it helps if you have some sort of interest additional to what you're learning, to connect it. So I, what I will say is that the 15 minutes don't necessarily have to come at the end of the day. It may be more appropriate to have it following the discussion, or with, or as part of the discussion of the book, because that will be more integrated. So I think that we're putting topics that are really go well together, because they're somewhat all related. And so I don't know who's going to put the schedule of, you know, what topic goes good, what, but I think that if, just make sure that all the topics are going to be covered, then maybe reshuffling the order, or to to make it more effective, maybe, maybe something to keep in mind.
Well, why don't we, we don't, why don't we come up with the agenda in no particular order tonight? Get it down on paper, and then we could distribute it and talk about the order of the the agenda and matters next time.
Yeah, well, we have a meeting next week, so I can get the agenda, we can talk about it now, I can get it drafted and sent out to you, and then we can talk about it.
With everything.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yeah, great ideas.
Okay, so, so do people feel more inclined to, here's another idea, to expand the book discussion to an hour and 15 minutes, to give us more time to bring in those code issues, or keep it at an hour and spend 15 minutes talking about the idea that Sarah and Lupita were talking about, about additional opportunities for affordable homeownership?
Well, I don't know that they have to be mutually exclusive, to Lisa's point, that as you're reading through the book, ideas emerge, which is exactly what they should should happen, is that your knowledge as a planning board member mesh with what we're reading. And we can put those on the table during the conversation. And, I mean, in fact, I'm about a third of the way through the book at this point, and it was the idea of for how do we increase access to, to affordable housing for for sale, that emerged from the convers, from what I've been reading in the book. So I don't know that we have to be quite so, we don't have to draw a dark, a line between the two. Just my thought.
Yeah, if I may, if I may ask, because we do have a volunteer facilitator, I have full confidence, that Lisa can guide us to, if you see the opportunity to ask the follow up question, to bring some of these ideas together, I'm sure you can do it, absolutely. And that would be very effective and efficient.
Seems to argue for just adding 15 minutes, than an hour and 15 minutes.
Okay, so I think we're down to a four, four agenda item agenda, which is Dr. Love, an hour and a half, an hour and 15 on the book discussion, which can incorporate the ideas that we just brought up. 15 minutes from Charles on the state of the staff, and the department, and the work plan, and half an hour from Hella, which Hella, I'd be happy to to tag team that with you on planning board conduct and meeting procedures.
Got it.
Yeah, I can take that item. If you have particular things that you want me to talk about, it sounds like maybe motions practice, I don't know, differences between quasi judicial and legislative items, or conflict issues, that kind of stuff, let me know, otherwise I may just pick, because we probably can't address everything.
I'll catch you offline. You know, I know in the past, we've, we've done it where you've shared the, you've shared that item with John Putnam, for example. And so it becomes a conversation, not just a, not just, you know, an education for planning board members, but also a conversation among planning board members about how we're working together.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay.
Can I just point out, too, that if the two of you talk, you can actually identify things that you think we need to brush up on, and we won't know which of you actually identify.
Right.
So we'll just.
Brilliant.
We'll just let go of that.
Right, so protects us both, Hella. All right, so that's the four. Thanks for taking that down, Cindy. We'll look forward to the order that we can come up with next time. Any other matters from staff or the director?
I would just like to thank Jean for her job well done tonight, her maiden voyage, flipping the switches and working the levers, and as always, Cindy, for keeping us on track. So thanks, everybody.
Appreciate that a lot.
There was, there is one thing that, well, thank you, there is one thing Sarah wanted to discuss, and I don't know if it's going to be possible, a retreat in August? Oh, no?
It wasn't a retreat in August, it was a.
Excuse me, recess.
A recess in August, just so, just so that we know that we have two weeks, or three weeks, or whatever the time period is, when we, there's no, like, there's no possibility that we're going to get an email from Cindy that says, hey, who's available for a planning board meeting? I realize that things are delayed because we were shut down for a couple of months. But many of us have been away from family for a very long time, and wanting to know that we have some time that we could be.
Away?
Not, 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 not have this responsibility on our calendar, so we could plan to do the driving, or whatever it will take to go see family. I think, for me personally, is something I'd like to put on the table for discussion, if it doesn't destroy planning board, planning staff's schedule.
Right. I'm going to kind of look to Charles a little bit.
Yeah, so far, the only thing we have scheduled is the CIP hearing on the 20th of August. So if you did want to take the first two weeks of August with no meetings, that would be possible. Other than that, yeah, we're really just kind of backed up from the, you know, initial COVID shutdown. But it looks like the first couple of weeks of August are wide open.
Kathleen King and Charles did reach out, and this is totally just happened today, had just reached out to me about putting the update of East Boulder Sub-Community Plan.
Yeah, that's something that could happen on the 20th, that's, that's not urgent.
On the 20th, okay.
Yeah, it's also, that's something that could happen on June 30th as well.
Okay.
I'm sorry, July 30th.
Can I ask a question? What are the chances that we're still going to be doing the online meetings?
Very good.
Very good. So I can, I can connect from whatever place, yeah, yeah, because I also, my, my big thing is, I'll probably be going to California, take my son to start his college career, if everything goes well. So I don't want to miss that. But I can connect from whatever place.
Okay.
If needed. I would rather not have to read all that stuff, but if I have to, I will.
So Cindy, if we want to go ahead and just cancel the meeting on August 6, then that would afford folks some protected couple of weeks.
Sure, yeah, it's right before my birthdays, or right after my birthday.
How does everyone, I mean, how does everyone else feel?
That's fine, if there's no need for an August 6 meeting, and that gets us, you know, whatever that really works out to, from the last meeting in July, three, four weeks of no planning board meetings, that's fine.
Yeah, I would take advantage of that, for sure.
We do have a July 30th meeting, just so you know.
Be last possible Thursday in July.
Yes, we do.
Okay, all right, so three weeks, that's what you get.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thanks for raising it.
Yeah. Otherwise, we just keep going.
We get in the car on the 31st, because the, the traffic will back up seriously late Fridays on this summer, I'm afraid. Everybody's going to be driving somewhere.
Anything else from the director?
Nothing from my staff.
How about the county attorney, city attorney, dealing with the county all day?
Nothing from me.
Okay, great, all right. Well, that's the case, then I think we can adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everybody, for a good one.
Have a nice night, everybody, thanks.
Bye. Stay safe and healthy.
You too.